Ellie, you ready? I've got so many folders. Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to our regular school board meeting. Today is Monday, December 6. And present in the boardroom, we have members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. And also joining us, we have the superintendent and several staff, administrative staff, along with our recording secretary, Katie Grant. And last but certainly not least, our student representative, Ms. Ellie Shaw. So with that, if you will, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President and Board, and community, I want to take this time to acknowledge the loss of one of our administrators this morning. Fantastic leader, fantastic leader at Bayshore Elementary. And it was an unexpected death. She had worked at her building for 12 years, served students in her community as well as district-wide. And she will be greatly missed. And she was greatly loved by the ASD family. So thank you. If we could give her a moment of silence.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. A moment of silence for Principal Heidi Packard. Thank you. The Board sends our condolences, our heartfelt sympathy to the family and to every student and staff at Bayshore. So Ellie, can you lead us in the land of acknowledgement?
Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude the Dina people, past and present, who have lived on these lands since long before Anchorage was here. May we all be good stewards of these lands. Chinon.
Thank you, Ellie. We want to welcome you to our meeting. As always, we thank you for attending and for supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and of this Board. The Board thanks students, parents, teachers, our staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and of course, your tax dollars. You are deeply appreciated. We're now at Item A3, which is the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as posted.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any objections to approving? Yes, Member Donley.
I have a discussion. Madam President, when this moved out of Governance Committee, there was a re-
Can you tell me what you're referring to, Mr. Member Donley?
Item 62 in the non-action items. Memorandum 62. When it came out of Governance, there was a request for a legal opinion because the Anchorage Charter would seem to override this specific memorandum. Specifically, I have copies of the charter here for the members. The relevant section of the charter. And we had requested a legal opinion.
We did. It was attached in our executive session agenda.
Do we already have a legal opinion?
Yeah, we already have a legal opinion. It was attached to our executive agenda. Executive session agenda.
Executive session agenda.
Wait, wait. Let me make sure. I know I've seen it, Member Donley. It's in there. Right, it's just on the regular agenda?
Could you go to 62? Oh, that's why. Yeah, it's not in my book.
Oh, okay. We can get you a copy of that, Member Donley. I might have a copy of it. Yeah, I could have. I'm sorry that you missed that, Member Donley, but we did get a legal. And it will come back next week as an action item. So we can-
So my next question would be then, is this legal opinion public record?
The legal opinion-
Because we had a problem with legal opinions here being public record previously. In fact, we even have a memorandum on the agenda to make a legal opinion public record.
So this item is attached to- Is it public? No, it's a legal opinion. It is public. I mean, it's not public, sorry.
Madam President, you know, I have a fundamental disagreement with the confidentiality of these legal opinions.
And that's, and that, we understand. I think we have not, we're gonna, we have an item on on this agenda where we will be discussing at some point, because I think the Board has varying opinions on that. We have not discussed it. But there is an, there is a an action item, Memo Number 47, if you want to pull that to discuss waiving attorney-client privilege.
But that doesn't apply to the legal opinion here.
No, it doesn't.
That's an executive content, yeah. So that's my concern about moving forward with putting this on the non-action agenda without this opinion, the decision on making this opinion public or not.
Well, the memo is still in executive session, so whatever we determine tonight will apply.
But it's, I'm talking about Memorandum 62 now. A legal opinion on Memorandum 62.
Memorandum 62 is a non-action item tonight. There will be no action on it tonight. Memorandum 47 is the guidance on waiving of attorney-client privilege, where the Board will discuss and vote. So whatever we decide tonight-
When would we get the opportunity to make this public if it's going to be on the action agenda at the next meeting? If we don't have, if we've got to go through this procedure-
Between now and, well, Member Donley, right now, we have not made a decision on attorney-client privilege. Once that decision is made, the Board will govern itself accordingly.
And when you say "we," who do you mean, we have not made a decision?
The Board.
But there won't be any chance for the public to see and review this legal opinion before it's before us at the next meeting for action?
The legal opinion for 9323?
No, for 62, Memorandum 62.
For 62. That's for Board policy, 9323.
Oh, yes, right.
So if, when that moves forward to action, depending on what we make tonight, the decision the Board makes tonight, it will either be attached to the public agenda or it won't, depending on the will of the Board.
Well, I think it would be more advantageous to wait to put it on the the non-action calendar until the memorandum is public. That way, the public would get full notice of what the administration's position is on this.
So I'm not, I'm not sure. So are you making a motion? Are you making a motion to adjust?
I moved to amend the agenda to delete Memorandum 62 as a non-action item on tonight's agenda.
Is there a second? Hearing no second? That motion fails. We are back to approving the agenda. Are there any other objections? All in favor of amending, I mean, I'm sorry, accepting, approving the agenda? Please, I don't want to do a vote, Katie, but just, are there any objections to approving the agenda?
Yeah, I continue my objection, Madam President.
And you didn't get a second, Mr. Donley.
But it's an objection to the main motion. It's not, it doesn't require a second. It just requires that you vote on it.
Thank you. Can you do that, Katie? Okay. Katie will open up online voting. Thank you. I think it's just one copy. I'll have to give you mine. I didn't open my computer. If you will vote, Board members, please vote to it, on the motion to approve the agenda.
Wait a minute.
Okay, who are we missing? I know it's a little early for voting, but- Yes.
Yep.
All right, and that motion passes 6 to 1. The agenda is approved with a- All right, that brings us to B1. We do not have a military report, but we do have an ELL community update. Welcome, Ms. Garby. Welcome, families. One of the items that we, the Board has adopted is a calendar. And on our calendar, we have, once a month, we will hear from various community groups and advisory groups in particular. So we welcome you guys. Can you turn on, in the bottom, you see a little voice with, yeah?
Okay, thank you for having us. So I have brought, so I'm Christine Garby, and I'm the Director for English Language Learners. And I wanted to bring with me tonight my language and cultural Samoan liaison. This is Artist Mutini. And she has been working closely with the Pacific community of Alaska. And I would like her to share some of the work that she has been doing and invite the rest of the community members up to speak with you. So thank you. Justin? Is it on? Can you hear me? Okay, good. Okay, again, hi, my name is Artist Mutini. I'm glad to have this opportunity to talk about our ELL updates. Before the COVID, we started to have something different. We do our Zoom meetings online. First, we have, the first semester last year, we did weekly Zoom meetings. And then after the second semester, we started to do twice a month. And then currently, we do it once, once a month because of now parents understand about the medications in place. So therefore, we degrees our meetings once a month. And we had to go according to the updates of the superintendents once you saw that way the community parents and what parents are, be able to understand. And not only that, with that, so we were able to build our good relationship with our community leaders, like what Christine Garby mentioned. We have the Pacific, Pacific community of Alaska. We have, his name is Seven, Toleafoa. He is the chief and is also a counselor, advisor for that PCA community. Polynesian Association of Alaska, Paula. Lucy Nansen, she's not present today. But we also have our Chief Equity Officer, Junior Omavai, from the Mayor's Office. He was able to help support our departments and also our parents and our students' learning. And with that said, we have a lot of good relationship built with them, and they're able to act as part of liaisons and able to expand more to our community leaders. So I'm going to turn the time to our Chief Officer Equity from the Mayor's. And then after that, just only a little bit, just like two minutes or so. And then we turn the time to our advisor here. And then we have also Reagan. He's part of PCA. We have a lot of support here, I tell you. Yeah, our department, they're the home. And then also, we have Mavis. She's also one of the PCA, the co-chair of the PCA.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ulual Junior Omavai. I serve as the Chief Equity Officer underneath Mayor Bronson. He has tasked me to come out and support community members when it is needed. As you can tell, there were some problems that was happening earlier, about a few weeks ago, that happened in some of the high schools. And we were contacted in order to come down and show support. And he has tasked me to come do that. With that, I joined forces with the school district, also joined forces with some of the local groups, as you see here, some of the Polynesian community leaders, to really just kind of mitigate and also kind of calm down some of the tensions that's happening within the schools. We held a program there, Mr. Seven will talk about it, where we had the community leaders come in and engage with students during lunchtime. And Principal Spinn actually mentioned that it was the first time in weeks that he felt normal at the school district. I say that because it's very important that we utilize our community members to give back to our kids. And everybody here knows that our kids are future. So it's important to have community members to step up in the position to be able to help our kids that are currently in the school district. So with some of the help, support that you see here, this is not all of them, but you can see well represented where these individuals go into schools and actually help kids from the different diverse groups, whether it be Samoan, Korean, whether it be white, black. You know, we really just try to engage and make it a welcoming atmosphere. And so the presence that these individuals that you see up here today made it very welcoming to every student in the school, which allowed students to be able to go to school, study, and be successful. And so I'm here today to support some of the efforts that are taking place by some of our community members. And it is a great resource to use local individuals that look like students that go to school here. And so I'm here today from the Mayor's Office. It's one of his priorities to be able to bridge the gap with our community members and also with our students. And this is a great resource for the school district to utilize.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam President, members of the Board, my name is Tavaloana Seven, Chief Tawiliili, Toleafoa, from the country of American Samoa and Samoa. I am proud to represent my community here today and to present some of the things that we have done as a community every month. And during the pandemic, we were doing it twice a month before the pandemic kind of slowed down. The ELL program translated everything into a language that was able to acknowledge the rough times of the Samoan community. Because everything that is put out is in two languages within this school district. And that is English and in Spanish. Unfortunately, Samoans don't understand both Samoan, English, and Spanish. So when the ELL program came in, we were able to come together in a Zoom program. She was able to translate things to the parents to help them with their young students who are in class. Some of the parents are not able to translate these things. And the parents cannot communicate with their students. Unfortunately, the ELL program did that for us. The issues that Mr. Junior Omavai had spoken about, the ELL program reached out to the Pacific community of Alaska. I know some people have understood PCA as like a health medical thing. The PCA for the Samoan community is the Pacific community of Alaska. It is a new society that has been put together by the young people to help our Samoan community come together. It is not only for Samoans, though. It is for anyone and everyone because the cap, like Junior was saying, has to be bridged. We have had the opportunity, with the help of the ELL program, to speak with Fairview Elementary. I've had the opportunity to meet with the East High School principals and staff with the help of Rain Reynolds from the, from the school district. I'm pretty sure he's an officer with you guys. And I've had the opportunity to meet with West High School. So the ELL program has definitely given us the opportunity to be involved in your school district. Before then, we were not getting anywhere. The calls, the emails, we're not getting anywhere. Messages that were sent out, we're not getting anywhere. So with me today, as a chief of the Samoan community, and back in 1997, I remember, there was a group of chiefs that came together when there was issues in the Alaska school district. And they put together a group that came down and talked to students. That is my part today. As a retired veteran and also a graduate of Charter College, I would like to give back to the community. And as forming up these chief members of the Samoan community, we would like to be involved in your schools. With the help of the ELL program, we are able to get that done, starting now. I'm going to give the time over because I can take the whole night. I can take the whole night. This community is not ready for me. So anyways, I'm going to reach over to this side of my, this is the co-chair of the Pacific community of Alaska, Ms. Mavis. Mr. Reagan, Mayor, is also a director for our group, Pacific community of Alaska. So I'm going to give them the time.
Thank you, Seven.
Because as a chief, Talafoa, and I have a great mind.
Thank you. Welcome, you guys.
Good evening, Madam President, good evening, Board members. It's an honor to be here. First, let me start off by expressing our condolences to the Packard family and any member or friends, if they're here, with the loss of that great leader. I mean, and I'm certain that every teacher and instructor plays a pivotal role in lives of our children, whether directly or indirectly. So I share your empathy with you when you lose someone with that passion. But I would like to introduce myself. My name is Reagan Junior Sawan Omavai. I'm also a chief. I go by Laulu, from our homeland. I'm a board member of the Pacific community of Alaska with Seven. We stand on the side as advisors with our younger group, taking charge and taking lead. Much has been said. I would like to express appreciation to the Mayor's Equity Officer for being here to support this and our effort in trying to be involved, both in the community of the school and as a whole in Anchorage, as we look in roles to try and assist our children. We understand and we applaud all the efforts that have been given, but we also come from a different side of things where we know that sometimes access as a whole is not enough. Inclusion needs to be there. So respectfully, we show up today to show face and to show you all that actions, that we understand that words alone don't mean anything, that actions are better. So we are here. We thank you for the time and we appreciate everything that you've done thus far for our children.
Thank you, Reagan.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mavis, and I am the co-chair for PCA. We not only represent our organization, but we represent the Pacific community as a whole. As my brothers have already relayed, it does not, it's not only for Pacific community, but other communities as well, especially the minorities. And we are here to try and bridge that gap, to provide that service to our students. We've managed to speak with ASD in terms of programs that are provided. And unfortunately, it falls to the curb in terms of some of the services that are limited to minority groups. And that is what we want to build and well as maximize in order to provide an equal opportunity to the rest of the groups. There's not much I could say more or add on to than what has already been alluded to. All I can say is, if we are able to build a future for our children, regardless of what race, I believe that Alaska can go much further than it already has. So with your help and our cooperation, we'll be able to build a team that's able to provide a path for the kids for the future, regardless of race. And I applaud the services that you have provided so far. But we do understand that there is still a need to improve. And we're here to help you reach our people and reach society as a whole. So we offer our hand, hoping that you would grab ours so that we can build a future for the children of Alaska. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am just so happy that you guys are here. This is the one time, don't go yet, this is the one time in our meeting with these, with our report, with this new structure, that Board members can get to ask one question each. No double-dipping, guys, one question if you have one. But I do want to thank you for being here and sharing all the work that you're doing because it's important. And we need to hear diverse voices, multiple voices around, it's just not up to the ASD to educate kids. It takes this whole community. So we thank you guys. Now, when is your next meeting? For the, for the district?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Fourth floor.
Okay.
And that's for parents to be able to Zoom in.
Yes, great.
So when we have the updates, like I said, from the superintendent, and the updates for the district and the community resources, that's when we start to have those Zoom meetings. Now it's once a month.
Okay, all right. I think I have it somewhere. I'll pull it up. Other questions from the Board, anybody? Yes, Dora?
Are we allowed to attend as Board members?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
And just a comment, I really do appreciate your community stepping forward to work with all of the students and particularly to try to help bridge the gaps of that communication and culture. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, absolutely.
Member Higgins?
Well, you've got the whole Board here, and you can come up with a wish list. So, and that, I think that's a good, it's a great opportunity for what can we do to further support and empower you? What does the Board do today? What can we do to help you? Because what you're doing is fantastic. I think it's tremendously respected. But if you've got an audience here beyond just the current issue, all of it, is there things that we are missing to do?
Thank you for asking that question. It's very important because it allows us to talk about the different things that can help, not only our community, but other communities. There's currently in process, working with some of the school principals to where different clubs are created for alternate routes for kids to go into. For example, there's going to be a Polynesian club starting at West High School. And if we can kind of introduce groups- And if we can kind of introduce groups that provide resources for these kids, and I'm talking about many resources to where they could dip in different type of groups to be available that allow our kids to be able to go in those different groups. For example, some of the groups that you heard about today are just one of many that are available. One of many great groups that are at your fingertips, and they're local here in Anchorage. I think if we do our job and do our due diligence, hear out some of the voices that are out here, that are offering their hands, I think it'd be beneficial for our kids to be exposed to different voices, different cultures, different communities, so that they can learn the different communities that are local here and that populate Anchorage, Alaska. And so you heard some of the groups here that talked about the different resources that are great for the children. Having more of that within the school will be beneficial for the kids, not only for the kids, but also with the parents and also the staff that are there as well, just to see the different faces that come in the building that offer a different perspective to allow our kids to learn, to allow our kids to understand, and to also give voice to some of the cultures that are here locally.
Great. Thank you, Junior.
That was a good question, Mr. Higgins. What can you do to help my community? You do not have enough Pacific Islanders on your staff. When you go to East High School, you have two Pacific Islanders in there. And that's why they have a program that is actively engaged. You go to West High School, there's only one. You go to Bartlett, zero. Diamond, zero. Service, zero. I'm speaking straight from after going down to the schools and meeting the students. That means you need to have more in your schools so they are able to target those students. When you have a Pacific Island program that's going on and it's led by Pacific Islanders, it'll be organized. But when you have a Pacific Islander group being led by someone else, now you have a problem because now they're bringing their own agenda instead of understanding what the students are trying to build. So having more staff members, right? Like we were talking about inclusive and equity, reach us to where we're at. We may not have doctor's degrees, but we have bachelor's and master's. We can actually come into the students and teach. We may be able to teach B E, but we're reaching our students to be able to help you calm the nerves of the students when they walk into the classrooms. Giving classes to the teachers on how to welcome them when they walk into the class. For example, if I was to start a conversation with you, I would start it by saying talofa, o amayon. That means hello, how are you? Whatever that student is feeling that day, if he's got a very limited understanding of English, he is able to understand that. That is an understanding of welcoming them into the school, to the classroom, and that will bring their nerves down, and it will bring them to a learning experience because you are willing to listen to them. But when you have teachers who cannot understand that language, we got a cap to breach. Would that answer your question, Mr. Higgins?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. I really do. It means a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Member Lessons, did you have a question?
I'm interested in hearing from you better ways to engage families and certainly translating things so that families can be aware of the communications sent home. That seems really important. What other ideas are you hearing from your families that they need to help their students be successful?
Yeah, so the great thing about adding different groups within side the school district or within institutions is you allow those to be educated about different cultures and backgrounds. What I mean by that is now when you have different groups like a Polynesian group coming, you know, Korean, Hmong, different Tongan groups that come in, it allows parents to learn about that culture. Not only different, you know, cross-cultural, but you know, white, black, who aren't Polynesian. You get to learn about the different type of cultures. For example, in Samoan, you know, our biggest thing, we got pride, family, and then respect. So now you know how to respond to a Polynesian or Samoan person if you learned about their backgrounds and histories. So when you add these different groups, you also educate others about the different type of groups that are coming in, that are going to school, that are employed, that are part of the board members. So now you have a better understanding of how individuals react or act. So that's one thing I got to mention is by having these different groups like Seven's group, other Polynesian groups, it just adds the educational piece within the school about the different diverse groups that are going to school and also attending these meetings and the belief system that they have and grown up with.
Ms. Lessons, thank you for the question. Got a very good question, right? And I'm gonna answer it really quick.
Can I add on?
Let me add.
Sorry.
We got about three minutes, guys.
And that's an awesome question.
Yeah, it is.
Because when you ask that question multiple times, the offer is always finance, money, food, and everything else, right? But you mentioned it right at the question, at the end of your question, when you say, what can you do to translate? Right, so communication is the big key. And basically, from everything that we're trying to say here is even in inclusion, it's a two-way street, right? And it includes the same thing when it comes to our children. You can look at everything else, but the biggest factor in an upbringing, and studies have shown this, is the environment, right? Where they raised, how they were raised, and what their perception is like. And that only comes with communication. And if we are included and involved in decisions and also in activities, we can bring that part to the table for you.
Thank you. Seven, I see you got, you got one minute, just one. Because I see you got one more thing to say.
Thirty seconds. You ready?
I'm ready.
The most important part is respect.
Yes.
When we conversate and I'm looking at you like this, it's me showing you respect. What I've seen in the schools, teachers don't understand that. Samoan kids, they are taught by their parents. When I'm talking to you, you look at me. So when they do that and they're looking at teachers, teachers are taking it as they're mad at them. They have that attitude like they're pissed off. So that becomes a problem. Communication is the key.
All right. Thank you. You guys have done an awesome, awesome job. I so appreciate you being here, and I look forward to being invited. Well, I come to the meetings, but I look forward to being invited to some of these community celebrations, whether they're at school or in the community. Please remember to invite the board. We appreciate you. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Vice President. I'm in the Samoan culture, Pak Taiteli, Manuialas.
Okay. Thank you. And that brings us to item three, our Student Advisory Board Report.
Okay, so S A B, or Student Advisory Board, held their third meeting of the school year on November ninth, two thousand twenty-one, at eight fifteen in the morning in this boardroom. This was our first meeting conjoining with the middle school students, and it was really an amazing experience. We loved having them. You know, our number doubled from thirty students to about sixty, so it was really great. We're really glad that they're joining us for the rest of the school year. We have a meeting tomorrow, December seventh, in this boardroom at eleven fifteen to one fifteen. And everyone will be dressing up in their own like school spirit, school colors, school attire. So it's gonna be a really fun last meeting for two thousand twenty-one, and we will rejoin January eleventh, I believe, will be our meeting after the one tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Any questions for our student advisor? All right, keep up the good work. Thank you. And that brings us to item, our goal monitoring. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm not sure if we have a copy. They're coming out now. This is going to be quick because the first meeting of the month is just to reintroduce you to the format. This one does take on a little bit change, but you should start to see a process. We are also this month getting a white paper report on the guardrail of underrepresentation, not leaving any student group underrepresented in our programs. That does come out in December. It isn't fully completed yet. Woo, my thing went off. That was a message to make this quick. So outcome monitoring, college, career, life ready. One of the items we shared already with you about C C L was the graduation rate that came last month. Now for this one, it's the same goal, of course, being college ready. Ninety percent of our students for college, career, and life readiness. This is an interim goal that is a little bit smaller, but understanding the research, it has something to do with the bigger picture of college readiness. So this one is specifically to college readiness and how it's related. And so it's increasing the percentage of nine through twelfth grade students successfully completing Algebra II. And the grade that the students would earn would be an A, B, or C. Ds don't count for this. And it's going to increase from thirty percent to thirty-four. And this shares the longevity of us collecting data on this. And right now, we took a dip, as we did in math and reading and all other larger indicators with our student body during the pandemic time. So we're looking to increase. We are just a little below target. We want to get back up there at three point three four. But the same rating colored chart at the bottom shares where we are. We also, on all these new data points, gave the N for you so that you would know how many students and the change in the number of students. With this report as well, we're gonna dig a little deeper because as you just heard, the, go ahead and go to the next slide. As you heard, is the real goal is for that opportunity to ensure that all the students in A S D, we have a goal and a mission that success for all students, that success is going to look different. That's why we have college, career, and life readiness, that everyone should be life ready, but whether they choose a college or a career path really depends on those interests. So you heard a little bit about engaging in pathways and things like that. But we're going to take a look at this, and our goal is that each of these categories, then, if we have thirty-four percent, overall, we would really want to see in our different communities the number of kids that are successfully completing Algebra II. It is not a class for all students. All students don't, it's not a graduation requirement, but we do know through research that I'll share a little bit, that the completion of Algebra II is highly correlated to college success as a freshman. And we want our kids to be college and career life ready. At the bottom, after the demographics, you'll see different types of schools such as comprehensive, alternative, charter, and special schools and programs for credit recovery. Along the top, again, the students, the number of students, total students, number of students enrolled, and then how many, what percentage of that is that, and how many students actually completed. The good news is that you look all the way over to the right, that we're the kids that actually are in the classes with their teachers. Teachers are doing a great job. Kids are learning. We have a high percentage of A, B, and C success rate. So this goal, if you looked at these data, you might think along the lines of access and opportunity. The next slide shares a little bit about, we expanded on the why around Algebra II. And there's some research that we shared at the retreat about redefining ready. It has to do with college and what you look for. It has to do with career and life. That's where some of those courses came from. But Algebra is a gateway to Algebra II. And so thinking big picture wise, you can't get to success in Algebra II without a great alignment of your other math and without access to students as early as we can get them within the four years to complete in Algebra II if they wanted to go to college. And so this just gives a background about that, but letting the board know that this is an outcome that we're looking for. It isn't an end-all and be-all for everyone, but it does give you a picture of how you have to back plan to get there, which is, Member Lessons brought that up earlier today about what's your outcome that you want, back plan to how to get there. Algebra I is a key in that, that plan, that road. So this again is the math proficiency, the same group that's working with our math proficiency in grades three through nine is also working on this. And instructional focus again is on Algebra I and through multi-tiered system of support so that students that struggle at first and maybe don't get the hang of Algebra I yet, that we support them to really continue their math learning. And it's a cycle. It's providing professional development, learning our students, understanding the data, engaging in collaboration with each other to improve instructional practices, finding out how do we do, collaborate again and start over. That's what schools do. We do together, we learn, we teach, we come back together to see how best we can meet our students' needs. Same way, implementation stage across the top, one, two, three, four, five. The action steps in thirty thousand foot view that are happening, these aren't the very detailed of the detail at every school. Every school would overlay their own data on top of their program, their staffing, and understand where can we make changes. And then, of course, the strategies along the side. So just wanted to share a broad overview. I do like to share, though, what those schools are, just so that we can get familiar. So in this report, you'll see again, what do we mean when we say comprehensive high schools, alternative charter, and the other special schools and credit recovery? So that you understand a little bit, some students that go to credit recovery, that is the second chance. And so the expectation, we know that we've had some other inputs. And so, you know, credit recovery, the principals always share, I hope that everybody knows that we're the ones who are also supporting kids, you know, in that pathway forward. So with that, that is just a broad overview of just explaining it. You guys have this now that we've done several with the same format. This is the fourth one with your goals, and look forward to chatting next time with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bishop. And as the, our next meeting is the twentieth, so please send your questions in so that we can have a good response ready for you. And if you need to refer to the outcome on your desk, you still, you should have the progress monitoring of student outcomes guide. So you can structure your who, what, when, where, why, and how questions similarly, but focused on the content of the monitoring. So I thank you guys for that. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And so that moves us to our public comment section. And before I do that, I need to just make sure that we are, we understand how this section of our, of our public comment works. So we'd like to again welcome you to the first section. We do our students first, and we have several students who've signed up to give us comments today. And so, but we have set aside an hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. And any, your comments is limited to three minutes. Comments in excess of the one hour will be allocated, of the one hour allocation, will be heard at the second opportunity, which is at the end of our meeting. Board members will not answer questions during this part, during public comment. It is your turn to speak, and we will listen. The board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through testimony. There is a little sheet, I believe this sheet is still out on the desk if you need to see what our decorum rules are. We conduct our meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order, and that's a set of rules for the orderly, for orderly meetings, and it's been used for centuries. The rules require the board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinions and statements. And here are a few reminders under Robert's Rules of Order. Do not attack a member's or speaker's motives. Speakers may point out what he or she believe to be a natural consequence of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attacks others. Please refrain from disturbing the meeting. No cheering, applause, or outbursts. I do sometimes forget, but I will try to remember not to do that. Unless you are testifying, you must be polite to the board and other speakers. Attendees will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the school board. No foul language or profanity is allowed. Please keep your masks on at all times, including during your testimony. Your mask should cover both your mouth and nose. If you have a medical waiver, please let the, the staff know that you have a waiver. As the president of the board, it is my duty to enforce these rules of civility and decorum. As such, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules and others. Further, I will have removed Further, I will have removed from the meeting anyone who does not heed these rules and fails to conduct themselves in a civil manner. So with that, we will start our public testimony with our students. First, we have Anna Walker. You have, you have three minutes, Anna. Yeah, you want to pull it down to your face a little bit? You can. Great. All right.
Hello, my name is Anna Walker. I'm a fourth grader at Rogers Park Elementary. I'm here to tell you how amazing my teacher is and to ask for a fair contract for her, my parents, and all the other teachers of ASD. My teacher, Ms. Stewart, is kind and always has good activities. She makes it fun to learn. For example, one activity that my class did was make a popsicle stick marble run Mesopotamian ziggurat. That was really fun and helped me learn about engineering, architecture, and Mesopotamian culture. She spends a lot of time preparing activities like the one we did on circuits. We learned about electricity using batteries, light bulbs, and wires. She also inspired me and my friends to write a book together that we want to get published. After, yeah, and she supports us by letting us work on it in class when we have choice time. Ms. Stewart also has additional duties. After school, she helps people safely cross the road even when it's cold, really cold out, and I mean really cold. In addition to her amazing time in the classroom, she spends hours grading at work at home and is a school taking campus champion and is on the building leadership team. She also hosted a student teacher because she wants to make sure that there are qualified, well-trained teachers in the room with students. And this is just one example of all the amazing teachers out there. I'm here to ask you to give teachers a contract they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. Next, we have Audrey Warman, Warman. Is there Audrey? Okay, um, oh, no. Okay, we'll try to come back. What, oh, and then telephonically, we have Mia Shelton-Brooks. Mia, star six to unmute.
Thank you all for supporting Anchorage School District students and for listening to my testimony tonight. My name is Mia Shelton-Brooks and I am a freshman at West High School. I'm testifying today to bring your attention to concerns about the consent lessons in Anchorage High Schools. I appreciate that these consent lessons exist, but I'm concerned because some teachers aren't treating the lessons as if they were important. For example, some teachers at my school have said things like, these are a waste of time, or they have told students that no one, not teachers or students, want to be doing the consent lessons. I think this is not okay because acting like the lessons are a waste of time tells the students that consent lessons are not important and don't need to be taken seriously. This could lead to students thinking that consent itself isn't important. The good news is that there are potential solutions to this problem. Other students and I would like to see high schools involve students more in leading the consent lessons. Students could be working with the teachers to teach the consent lessons. This would make the lessons more meaningful to students. As school board members, you can help make this, make this possible. Please make sure that the next round of ASD students who receive mandated consent education get to learn from peers who care about the subject. Thank you again for listening to my testimony.
Thank you, Mia. Okay, next, we have Catherine Walker. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Catherine Walker and I teach oceanography, marine biology, and engineering at Diamond High School. I also sponsor the Ocean Club, GSA Battle of the Books, and the Green Effects Club. I happily put in extra time with my amazing students and I absolutely love what I do. First, I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to speak and making the difficult decisions during the pandemic that have kept educators, students, and families as safe as possible. I'm here tonight to ask all of you to make an easy decision. And that is to support teachers by providing us with a contract that will help retain the excellent educators in our district and to recruit highly qualified educators that we desperately need to fill our present and future open positions and hopefully teachers that reflect the diversity of our student body. Education holds the utmost importance for my family. My husband and I are both National Board Certified Teachers in ASD. And our mother's taught in ASD as well until their retirement. Our two children, who you just met, are currently in ASD Elementary School. Both of them are lucky to be in the classroom with exceptional teachers, as you just heard my daughter Anna share tonight. I have been teaching for almost 16 years and I regret to say this is my first time testifying. My daughter beat me to it and she's nine. It's a difficult thing to find time to do, but I planned ahead and did over eight hours of work yesterday in order to be ready to speak tonight and not get behind on providing meaningful feedback to my students. Please know that for every educator here, there are many more that could not make it that feel the same. Every decision our district, in our district should benefit students. And what students need are qualified teachers in the classrooms. It is in your power to provide that by offering a contract that improves teacher retention and recruitment. The process so far has been incredibly disrespectful to educators. And this is at a time when over 60% of Alaska educators do not have a defined benefit, nor have the stability provided by Social Security. Attempting to reduce the quality of educator healthcare should never occur, especially in the middle of a pandemic. This process should have been short and simple and not have ended up in mediation. In this time of a teacher shortage crisis with over 280 unfilled positions, it is an easy decision to offer contract to promote teacher retention and recruitment. All educators are being asked to do more with less, but the burden has been especially heavy on elementary teachers. As a parent of elementary school students, I do not support this. As an ed, fellow educator, I do not support this and I will not vote to ratify a contract in which elementary teachers do not have sufficient and protected planning time. I'll cut a little. We need a contract that respects our knowledge and expertise and we want it as soon as possible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. And thank Anna for her courage. Next, Reagan Brooks, telephonically. Reagan, if you, if you are there, star six to unmute. Right, don't see her. All right. Next, we have Lisa Sparrow. Lisa, welcome. You have three minutes.
I'm here to talk about teacher retention and what people in this room need to do to support Anchorage teachers. The job of teaching at ASD is becoming increasingly undesirable due to two factors. First, retirement. Alaskan teachers hired after 2006 have the worst teacher retirement in the United States. We're the only state where teachers do not have pension or Social Security. Additionally, at retirement, Social Security payments teachers earned before becoming a teacher are reduced along with spousal benefits because of the windfall elimination provision in the government pension offset laws. These two laws unfairly penalize all government workers, but are especially unfair for workers without a pension, like all Alaskan teachers hired after 2006. There is bipartisan legislation in Washington to eliminate both of these laws. Changing these laws will cost the state of Alaska nothing. Individual teachers, school board members, and the administration at ASD need to put pressure on our legislators in Washington to pass SB 1302 and HR 82. Secondly, the lack of subs and support staff is creating a new normal at ASD. This new normal tells teachers that they need to expect to lose planning time or lunch and cover recess on a regular basis due to lack of subs and support staff. Teachers feel guilty about taking time off because they know it may cause other teachers to lose planning time or have additional students placed in their room. This treatment of teachers creates burned out teachers. Burned out teachers leave for greener pastors. To end, I want to tell you how an organization that appreciates its employees treats them. My husband is the executive director of Kids Core, which runs the Anchorage Head Start preschool program. Please know, this is an organization where funds are always tight. Nevertheless, at Kids Core, every employee was given a 10% raise. Plus, for the past four months, every employee has been given 500 extra dollars a month and had their healthcare premium paid. This is how you treat employees when you value them and want them to stay. ASD teachers need your support. Please support teachers by insisting on competitive pay for subs and support staff and a contract that promotes teacher retention. Please pressure our legislators in Washington to pass legislation that will eliminate the windfall elimination provision and government pension offset laws. Remember, that real work, that value-added learning that happens in this, in the classroom, that work is done by teachers. The more you support teachers in doing that work, the more you support student learning.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristen Ryder.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Kristen Ryder and I am a fourth grade teacher at a Title I school. This is my 12th year teaching the district. I'm a product of ASD and a graduate of Bartlett High School. Tonight, I have several areas of concern that I would like to share. First, I'm urging you to settle the contract between the Anchorage Education Association and Totem Association. We have all been in the trenches for the past two years, constantly completing the ever-changing tasks that we are being directed to do. We are working harder than ever before, spending more hours trying to keep our heads above water. This feeling of desperation is not solely due to COVID, but has been intensifying for me over the past decade. I've experienced the increased amount of testing our children are being exposed to at an earlier and earlier age. As a district, we put a huge emphasis on testing data and looking for ways to increase the number of proficient students. My students are more than a number on a spreadsheet. They work hard every day. They are working through grade level material even after virtually, pun intended, losing out an entire year of school. At the beginning of the year, I had two students out of 24 that were at grade level, two. So how can we increase proficiency? When I first started teaching, we had many programs and opportunities for students to receive extra help outside of the school day. There was SES tutoring that allowed parents to utilize Sullivan and other private tutoring services that even went to the student's house for sessions. I know this because this was one way I gained experience while in college. We had Century 21 program that was eventually cut from my building in part because it became harder and harder to staff the positions and budget cuts. In the past, we've had enough funding to provide attendance for teachers to tutor after school or run clubs. Honestly, and if there was enough money right now for teachers to tutor, I'm not sure many of us could even handle putting the time in to make it beneficial for students. My, my class sizes have slowly been climbing. My first class that I taught 12 years ago was 16 students. It was a first grade class. Over the past couple of years, our primary classes have been on average of 24 to 25 kids. To add to that, our kindergarten paraprofessionals are only able to work with three, with kids three hours a day in many buildings as they are now required to do new duty as part of their position. Additionally, this year, we were trained on the changes to the student support team process and what we have to do to be able to test a student for special education. Are you aware that this year, we were told that in order to bring a student forward for evaluation, we have to have six to eight weeks of data, intervention data for each area of concern? It was hard enough trying to collect data for one area with the help of a team. Please tell me how I'm supposed to run interventions for reading, writing, and math if a student is struggling or not making progress in all areas of academics? Where are we supposed to find the time and resources to do this? We are spread so thin already and to be told this information just added more stress to an already stressful year. The district is receiving millions of dollars in federal and state funding to help with trying to fill the gaps that have grown wider over the past couple of years. This money needs to actually go to support programs that provide students with the extra help that they need.
Thank you. Next, we have Angie Jensen. Welcome, Angie.
Thank you. My students call me Miss Angie. And it has been an honor serving my community for the last 15 years. I've served in seven different schools, elementary schools, and sometimes more than one school at the same time. I want to start out by saying how appreciative I am for everyone that has worked so hard to provide safe places for our students. It's been a chaotic time, to say the least. In 20 years, when our students are running our world with kindness and respect, we'll need to think about these people. They are my heroes. They are our heroes. Our kids bring what they live to our schools. Our classrooms continue to be healing places through predictable routines, caring adults, and the teaching of social and emotional skills. But it has been getting more difficult to maintain the various reasons. You know, our lack of subs, the increased anxiety brought in by staff and students, and the misinformation about how schools do. Which is why I am pleased to see the board guardrails includes mental health in every elementary school. Mental health skills start early. The people qualified to do this work are type C staff, including school counselors, psychologists, nurses, social workers, and we now have some schools with contracted clinicians. I am a member of the National School Counseling Association. I am also a member of our state school counseling association. And I want to share what Beth's practice, mental health, might look like. So many of you are familiar with the RTI model. It's very similar. It's a triangle. The bottom of the triangle serves all our students. It is the prevention piece. It is the piece where we teach the ASD SEL standards. It is the piece that is important for developing relationships with every single student. And these lessons, they teach how to solve conflict peacefully. They also, you know, teach the skills of self-regulation and how to handle video game and social media addiction. I also want to shout out to the guests that were here earlier. They came to my school last week when I saw increased aggression. Seven, Shane, and Junior all recently visited our sixth grade classrooms here at Fairview Elementary. They encouraged our students to respect each other. I have a wish list. You said you like wish lists. These are, okay, that's it. All right. If you want to hear my wish list, call me.
Please email them to us.
I will. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's see, Catherine has already. We are now at Michelle Carton, telephonic, Michelle Carton. I don't see her there. Okay, let's go back to Reagan, Reagan Brooks. Star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you all for supporting ASD students and thank you for listening to my testimony. My name is Reagan Brooks and I'm the parent of two ASD students, a sixth grader and a ninth grader. I'm testifying tonight to share concerns about access to math classes. And I'm speaking about this tonight because I know you're all concerned about equitable access to Algebra II. Before I begin, please know that I'm very grateful to all the educators who've supported my children. I know that none of them have been trying to perpetuate non-PR system. However, I do believe that the system my children are currently benefiting from does amplify inequitable access to math learning. My first concern is simply that the advanced math opportunities my children have been able to access in elementary school are not equitably advertised. I only knew about the opportunity for my children to take pre-algebra as sixth graders because of other parents who I knew socially. They told me to send an email and I sent an email. But if I had not been told to send that email, I'm not sure if my child would have had access to the learning opportunity. Word of mouth is a notoriously inequitable way to distribute information. It simply amplifies access to opportunities for those who already are likely to have access. My next concern is transportation-related. Currently, my sixth grader is able to access pre-algebra via Zoom, so transportation isn't an issue. However, when my older child took the course as a sixth grader, it was only available to children whose families could get them early morning transport to Central Middle School. This limits access and has impact downstream. My last concern has to do with private tutoring and programs like Kumon. I think it's wonderful that many families access support like this, but I wonder if this private support this private support might amplify inequitable access to advanced math in elementary school, middle school, and high school. Probably about half the families I know support some kind of outside-of-school math learning for their children. I wonder if this access is affecting learning opportunities students can access in ASD? And if so, whether there's something you can do about it? I know you cannot possibly address significant issues like income inequality or inequitable access to communication, but you can have influence over how word gets out about advanced math learning opportunities. Please make sure all fifth grader families learn about how sixth graders can access pre-algebra. You can also ensure that all interested and qualified students have transportation to or online access to advanced math learning opportunities. And you can begin to ask questions about the role of outside tutoring and other math support in ASD. I'm hopeful that through all this, you can support more equitable access to math. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Reagan. Next, we have Margaret McDonough. Welcome, Margaret. You have three minutes. It's on. Oh, you just turned it off. There you go. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Margaret McDonough, and I'm a 24-year educator in Anchorage School District, working- And I'm here tonight because I'm worried about what's going to happen to the students of Anchorage next year and going forward if the ASD continues to be unwilling to do all that they can to attract and retain quality teachers. The proposals that have been offered have been insulting, leaving any words talking about how appreciative the district is for all the above and beyond work that educators have done the past two years empty. There is a nationwide teacher shortage. In Anchorage, this year, there was 280 unfilled positions. In a state where teachers can't get any security, have no retirement, there's no incentive for people to stay. I'm not going to go anywhere because this is my 24th year, and I'm fortunate to be a first-tier-two-in educator. But I'm a disappearing portion of the ASD workforce. More and more educators are part of the tier-three system. So in a climate where they have no social security, no retirement, and they're being expected to do more and more and are only being offered 1.5% a year for three years, why on earth would they stay? All around me at my school, I hear talented, passionate teachers, excuse me, saying exactly this: They're going to leave. And there won't be anyone to fill those spots, not when they can go to another district and another state where they're compensated according to their expertise in education and where they have some security for themselves later in life. What will that do to public education in Anchorage? What will that do to our students? As someone who has lived here all of my life, that scares me. I am frustrated and angry and tired, and I'm just trying to bear to be one of the lone survivors of the apocalypse. We need a real contract, not something that's so insulting that it can't even be called a joke. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Andrea Lang. Welcome, Andrea. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me. I'm the music teacher at Kincaid Elementary School. It was the summer of 1994, and I was preparing to work at Hanshu Junior High as the new choir teacher. My husband and I were opening the mail we received that day. We were both teachers. There was a letter from ASD. Inside was a blue paper detailing all the cuts that the district was intending to make to our current health insurance. The district controlled our health insurance, and it was a negotiation year. The district was threatening our health coverage to manipulate negotiations. For that and other reasons, there was a teacher's strike that year. The letter has gone down in history as the Blue Snafu. The district stated it was just a mistake, but it wasn't a mistake, and it is not forgotten. One of the issues in negotiations this year is our Public Education Health Trust coverage. There are several reasons why AEA should remain with P E H T. Our members want P E H T. It is the Better Health Plan. We vote on changes to our plan. Our plan is managed well. However, the action by the district in 1994 is, to me, the ultimate reason for maintaining our own health plan. So you see, we cannot, we cannot relinquish control of our health insurance. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay, he's not in the queue. He's not present. Let's move on to Nile Sherwood Williams, telephonically. Do you see him? Do not see Mr. Williams either. What about Deborah Hanson? I think I saw her. Yes. Deborah Hanson?
I'm here.
Yes.
I'm here.
You have three minutes.
Okay.
Welcome.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Hello. First, I'd like to thank you all for listening to all this public testimony and to me, I'm my third time testifying about Inlet View School to keep it on its current site on the north side of the property. My name's Deborah Hanson, and I'm a 39-year-old neighbor of Inlet View School. Second, the next statement is key to the point I want to make tonight about Inlet View Construction. The Anchorage School District is committed to the guiding principles of openness, transparency, accountability, and responsiveness. That's from the ASD website. Last week, the Building Design Committee had its first public meeting after over a year of meeting privately. There were many good points raised on keeping the school on the north side. Moving the school to the south side will not change the sun shading of the site. You can't move the sun around. Moving the school to the south side won't make the expense and problems and costs of site preparation, water management, traffic, and parking go away. At the end of the meeting, the Anchorage School District architect stated that he would bring concerns and comments to ASD, and ASD would make a decision. I was shocked that the school district, after all the protests over moving the school, having a letter submitted that gathered 107 signatures in a week, that ASD would decide in private what is going to happen to Inlet View School. What happened to the principles of openness, transparency, accountability, and responsiveness? Third point, last week, I sent a question to the ASD Inlet View website. Has any Anchorage Elementary School had a school replacement while operating the school on site? ASD has not replied. From the comments that I heard at the Building Design Committee meeting, it sounds as if ASD is moving the school primarily to make the new construction process convenient for parents and staff. It is not safe to have an operating construction site on a tiny site like people keep characterizing Inlet View School. Kids won't have access to a playground. In the current site, where the school is on the north side, it's superior in every respect. It's got great sun, views, the traffic works okay, the water tables lower there, there is earthquake resistance, and the cost is lower. Finally, ASD is proposing a $30 million, 60-year school project. Please don't waste money by putting it in an inferior site to please the current parents and staff. The neighborhood has to live with the decisions that ASD makes, as well as future generations of students, who I am sure would prefer to play in this zone. I appreciate your listening to this, and please make Inlet View School design an open profit and keep it on the north side. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah. Next, we have Sandy Thompson Wallace. Welcome, Sandy. You have 30 minutes. I know you could use it, right? You have three minutes.
Good evening, Anchorage School Board, Dr. Bishop, and the ASD team. I am Sandy Thompson Wallace, president of Totem Association of Educational Support Personnel and a 25-year employee of the Anchorage School District. Frequently, I get asked, what does Totem stand for? Most people think it must be an acronym for something and spend quite some time trying to figure out what word each letter stands for and represents. In 1967, when several ASD school secretaries got together to form an association to improve educational opportunities and working conditions for the educational instructional support personnel of ASD, Totem Association came to fruition, and the symbol of the Totem Pole was selected to represent the group. Totem poles do not necessarily tell a story, as much as they serve to document stories and histories familiar to community members, family, or clan members. Totem poles are primarily visual representations of kinship depicting family crests and clan membership. Those first Totem visionaries used the Totem Pole to symbolize strength, family, and that standing together, we can accomplish so much more than we can individually. Building on the strength of others makes us all stronger. Totem, T is for talent bring to this district is one of its greatest assets, and it is all the richer for that talent. O is for organized. Our organized and awesome clerical staff keep our schools, departments, principals, and directors on track and make sure that all of the details are handled, deadlines are met, and that the business of this district is taken care of. T is for team. We are a valuable and essential part of the educational team. We are committed to educating all students for life and work hard to ensure success for all of our students. E is for enthusiastic. The energy and enthusiasm that our employees bring to the district and give to our parents, students, and community is the face of this district. We most often are the first impression and work to make that connection. M is for mentor. We are the resource for new hires or new to district. We help train, offer advice, and share our knowledge every day so that everyone can be successful coming into this district. We bring strength, knowledge, skills, and a passion for our jobs in the district. It is time that the district recognizes our value as part of this organization, as an equal and integral part of educating our most precious resource, our students. No contract, still working. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Michelle Martin, telephonically. I don't see Michelle. Okay. Danielle Kemp. Star six to unmute.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
All right. Thank you to the board for having me this evening. My name is Danielle Kemp. I am a retired Army Combat Officer and music teacher here in the ASD. I'm also the president and co-founder of the Alaska Coalition of Firetop Educators. And I would like to talk to you tonight really about a couple of things, but mainly the contract, as was stated earlier. Negotiations have not been going well. It's almost been an insult to the teachers. It has been an insult. Let's just be real about it. Fact that we've gone this long and that we, you know, probably had to go to arbitration and the offers that have been put forth by the administration have been an insult to the teachers who've been working so hard under such difficult conditions. So we need to fix that. On the same line, part of this is our lack of concern for bringing in, recruiting educators of color and retaining them. Throughout the entire entirety of the negotiations, I've heard a single word, not a single word, mentioned about recruiting and retaining educators of color. I really don't know why. It halfway baffles me that this entire time that educators of color haven't been mentioned once. We have a problem. If you haven't noticed, we only have 1% of our certified teacher cadre is black. With a 5% black population in Anchorage, only 1% of our certified teacher cadre is Alaska native. Yeah, we're sitting on about 11 to 12% of our Anchorage population is Alaska native. Over 60% of our school population, our kids, are kids of color. But yet, we're sitting, still sitting for the last, I don't know how, 80 something years, 100, pretty close, to 85-plus percent. Our teachers are white, so we have a problem. Houston, Anchorage, we have a problem, and it needs to be fixed. But the fact that it hasn't even been addressed, I'm telling you right now, to teachers of color, that's an insult. And if you, if you want to increase your numbers of teachers of color, you got to step up. You got to say something. You got to reach out. All right? You think you're losing teachers right now?
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Let's go back to Nile Sherwood Williams. I still don't see him in the queue. Michelle Carton. Don't see her in the queue. All right, we'll continue on. Dawn Bachman. Yes. Star six to unmute, Dawn.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Hi. Sorry. My name is Dawn Bachman. I'm a mother and an ASD teacher. I'm calling to request tonight that all curriculum and teacher professional development materials be made public and easily accessible to all members of our community. I have a few reasons for this request. First, as a public school system open to the public, it only makes sense that everyone is aware of what we're teaching our children, that we hope to be future leaders of our community one day. Second, every taxpayer paying into the public school system has a right to transparency as to what his or her money is going to. Third, every parent should be able to access standards and curriculum for their specific child or children. Making curriculum public would take the burden off of already very busy teachers when requests to view curriculum are made, as well as put parents in a position to become better and more active participants in their child's learning. I believe that making these materials public would offer the greatest amount of transparency possible and create a better relationship with the school district and community. Instead of having to defend what is or isn't being taught, the curriculum and professional development materials would be able to speak for themselves. While I fully understand that this could be a great undertaking and that there is a financial cost of making materials viewable online, I think you'll find that I am not alone in accepting this as a reasonable cost and hope that it is something you will consider in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dawn. Sharon Meacham. I don't see her online. Claire Ellis, in person. Welcome, Claire. You have three minutes.
Thank you for your time. I believe we are witnessing the crumbling of the public education as we know it. The current system and the way that we are operating is not sustainable. I'm the physical education teacher at Spring Hill Elementary, and I don't say it lightly when I hold one of the most pivotal positions in my building. I run both running clubs and ski clubs, which always host over 100 students. I know every child. I know how to motivate every child. I know how to de-escalate every child, which I do very regularly. I know their siblings, their parents. I know who's homeless. I know who's chronically ill. I know who has a terrible home life, and I know who has had OCS involved in their lives. I'm also the teacher in charge. So imagine just recently when nine staff members were out for a week, including both of my administrators. I was left to run an entire building that is short-staffed without an adequate number of substitutes while dealing with parents, the police at one point, and every major behavior that occurred while also needing to cover lunch duty. I spent my entire planning period for the first quarter working in the front office until we had an administrative assistant in the building. Teachers are missing their planning in lunchtimes due to the lack of subs in the building when more staff is out than can be covered. Our librarian recently has had to cancel all of her classes to teach kindergarten. I spend every moment that I am not teaching assisting throughout the building, yet specialists are not given a single minute more of planning, and it seems that even our staff are receiving less and less planning because of their other duties assigned. The majority of my planning is used to help with the mental health of students. My radio is on me at all times to respond to any crisis. I am blessed to have a great hold on my mental health, and so I offer to put myself in the position to lose my own planning, but every extra second required by the district is then required for me to teach winter interventions around the building when I could be a much better asset in the help of students since we don't even have full-time counselors or psychologists. The cost of living right now is skyrocketing, but there is zero effort being put in to increase our salaries for the staff that has been here through this entire pandemic. In a society where teachers could go anywhere and work somewhere else with the possibility to earn- to earn commission, bonuses, and raises, where are we going to find people to fill the positions as these teachers are retiring or leaving this profession? We are already short-staffed as it is, and we aren't seeing tons of people signing up to take those jobs, let alone be a substitute. With many positions being unfilled and the COVID relief money that was sent from the federal government, I cannot imagine that there isn't any money to offer an appropriate raise. We currently have two kindergarten classes with over 30 students each, and when we had no itinerant PE teacher hired, I was covering both of them at the same time. Imagine 60 kindergartners in their first week of school ever with one teacher. Herding kittens would have been more fun. 30 kindergartners for one teacher is too much to ask. Our class sizes need to be addressed. I think instead of purchasing more technology and new curriculums on a regular basis, we should get back to the bare minimum and pay our teachers more to do what they are qualified to do. They can all teach without the latest and greatest program being rolled out. My laptop here works perfectly fine, yet I'm about to receive a brand-new one next month with the rest of ASD staff. Instead, let's rearrange the budget and put teacher salaries as a highest priority, and that way you can retain high-quality teachers. Otherwise, I'm going to keep getting surveys that ask me what you guys can do to retain teachers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Rosalyn Grady Weish telephonically. Star six to unmute, Rosalyn.
Hello?
We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hey, I'm Rosalyn. I'm a mother of five, and I'm a parent educator. I am the founder and vice president of the Alaska Coalition of Bi-Pac Educators. Excuse if you hear the three in the back. So I'm actually going to come to you guys as a parent tonight. I was going to come with a list of complaints, but my daughter's awesome counselor from Betty Davis East High actually just said we will not want to go to set up the meeting. But I will tell you about her experience as a Black freshman in honors courses at Betty Davis East High. I am truly, at this point, asking for help and guidance. Trinity has been behind since I caught COVID. When I contacted her nurse and told her she would be out, she basically stated that she was a freshman and she could log onto her Canvas. I didn't think she was being serious, but to the detriment of her grades, she was. Trinity has not been doing well since I had COVID, and I recovered from that. That was back in August. When I realized it was too late was first semester ending. I thought that she would be able to catch up by now. At this point, she's been asking me to take her out of honors courses, put her back in regular courses, and take her out of school because she doesn't want to look dumb. Now, I thought it was just because my child hated school because I'm an educator. But she doesn't hate school. She's just extremely overwhelmed. According to her, and I say her, because we know kids, her people haven't really said anything or offered assistance. The support besides come and see me at lunch. Well, if you have five or however many courses, I believe five to seven courses, that's a lot of people to go see at lunch. Her counselor is doing her best. Thank you, Ms. Hart-Vixen. She's also being enrolled into the real counseling program inside of the school. Her complaints are that she is completely overwhelmed. She has came to me and told me she feels dumb. She has also came to me and cried. She has came to me and asked me why I put her in honors courses. I put her in honors courses because I know that I have a smart and beautiful Black child, so I need help. As her mother, I do work several jobs to survive. I can't afford a tutor, like most. Thank you to migrant education that has reached out because she does get to go study to go into help for after school, which almost fails because of transportation issues, but that has been rectified. I do say this, though. As a parent educator where I'm at, I hold myself accountable for my students and their grades. Yet and all, that is elementary school, and I don't have 100 to over 100.
Thank you, Rosalyn. If you'd like to send your testimony to the board, the rest of it, that would be great. Thank you. Next, in person, we have David Hanson. Welcome, David. You have three minutes.
Hey, thank you so much. I was struck last time I was here by how late and hard you guys work, and then I'm struck again how difficult it must be to lose a friend and a staff member here. So I'm gonna, I guess in light of that, thinking about how brief our time is here, I'm gonna speak very shortly. I sent you a letter enumerating the points that I'd hoped to hit, but I'm just gonna stick it to one paragraph here saying, last time we were here, we voted and you guys supported the funding to build Inlet View, and I think that's fantastic. I think it should be built, and I support our schools. I'm now asking you really seriously to consider what I'm saying and the fact that placing the school on the south end of the site will have negative effects both on the people who use the school and the surrounding community. So I'm asking you to take a moment, think about what I'm saying, and please, please help save the community that I grew up within and that's so near and dear to my heart. And I want to say thank you again for what you do, and I hope that you have a time to consider what I'm saying in such a difficult and busy time. Thank you again, and good evening.
Thank you, David. Next, telephonically, we have Dr. Paula Williams. Dr. Williams, star six to unmute. I see her. All right, we'll come back. Let's see. Amanda Kulek-Tater-Kulek Compton. Amanda, star six to unmute.
Amanda Compton here. Thank you.
Hi. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Just audio check since I'm in another state on a speakerphone. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellamy. I am speaking tonight for a call for stability, which has been compromised as the endeavor to replace the Inlet View school continues. You've heard many people speak in support of the school and have likely read some recent letters to the editor. I'd like to speak to some confusion I think you might be hearing. There exists no dissent for a new school. We're all on board. There's a collective voice speaking up in favor of replacing Inlet View. But what's missing is in the discussion is that neighborly component, the part where residents support their other neighbors as they would want to be supported. I would really, like David, love to see a new school go up that won't require the disruption of busing students. Absolutely not. And there have been a couple, actually, of proposed designs that do accomplish this. I'm aware of another, or I'm sorry, I'm unaware of another school that does not have a full street between the school structure and the homes. I'm sure they're out there, but just anecdotally, I'm thinking of all the schools, and I don't know of one. So it seems very reasonable, it seems like a reasonable and civil accomplishment to make sure that there is that kind of buffer between a school or a building as large as a school and private residence. So the proposed site on the south end is very antagonistic. It's well beyond the point of basic annoyance and a disruption of aesthetics. It's a large structure that's literally budding up against several homes. There are decisions that make or break communities and that sort rifts for decades. Members of the school board, you may be in a position to prevent this from happening in my neighborhood. Pushing through a design that causes real damage to some of us will lead to deep, possibly irreversible, local resentment. The design for the northeast of the property results in no student busing, and I've heard of no reasons why it can't be completed. I've heard of no one on the design committee give any indication that it's not something that's viable. So why aren't we pursuing this? And I really want to urge you to help us get it to that point. Those of us in support of it, we will gladly participate in supporting our neighbors with the best choices that we make at a local neighborhood level. And I would be encouraged to school board and the rest of the neighborhood to support a new Inlet View on the northeast side of the property. This will help the community, and it won't be a design that only helps some people, like the one in the south side, but hurts others. No one should have to move out of their homes because of a poor school site selection. I do really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. We'll circle back to Dr. Paula Williams. Star six to unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I'm Dr. Paula Williams. I'm a proud member of the Alaska Black Caucus and the chair of Alaska Black Caucus Education Committee. On Alaska Black Caucus Education Committee, we are encouraged by the continued efforts of the school board, school district superintendent, and the many staff, students, and community members in their support of the anti-racism and the equity and instruction policies within the district. Moving ahead, we really encourage the Anchorage School District and the school to develop better awareness of the conditions members of the BIPOC community face on a daily basis inside and outside of our classrooms. And additionally, we look forward to the presentation of plans and timelines regarding the continued improved efforts to diversify staffing, our curriculum, and resources accessibility. These points are key to addressing the needs of our students and improving the educational experience within the Anchorage School District for all. We support you and yield the rest of this time for us to breathe and consider the people, all people, who are part of the Anchorage School District.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Okay. That ends our first hour of public comments. Do I see her? Yeah, okay, we can circle back to her. We still have time in the hour. Sharon Meacham, star six to unmute.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
About the technical issues earlier. All right. Good evening. My name is Sharon Meacham. I'm a new appointee of the Inlet View Building Design Committee, and I'm a retired Anchorage School District Elementary Principal. During my tenure, I oversaw two construction projects, one at Homestead and the other at Chugatch optional. You've received communications from concerned neighbors regarding the unsuitability of the current Inlet View proposal, which apparently keeps the students in place during construction. Well, based on my experience, if that's true, I ask you to reconsider. When I was at Homestead, we did stay at the building, and it was an absolute nightmare. The contractors did their best to protect the health, safety, and educational environment. They established the barricades and other deterrents, but construction is construction. We endured continual noise caused by the various types of equipment that was used. We also had, we oftentimes had to shout during instruction. We understood, we witnessed the accidental power and water outages. Drop-off and pickup were altered. Parts of our playfield were limited, and it affected us both educationally and emotionally. At Chugatch, we were assigned to Kennedy Elementary, which was located on Fort Richardson. Well, this news sent shockwaves to the entire school community and created initial resistance. Traveling from downtown Fort Richardson and then dealing with a military gate was deeply concerning. Potential kindergarten parents expressed apprehension about busing their children to the school. In the end, we were reassured and the move went smoothly. A few students did choose not to come with us, but overall, the enrollment was normal, and afterwards, parent feedback was very positive. In short, is it possible to keep students in place during construction? Yes. But what are the health, safety, and educational costs? Does keeping students in place provide the least restrictive environment? If students remain at Inlet View, the kindergarten and south-facing classrooms will experience continual noise and visual distractions. Recession and PE will primarily occur on the blacktop adjacent to the school. The staff currently impacted by COVID and other requirements will see expanded monitoring duties to ensure that children do not pierce that construction barrier. Safe drop-off and pickup will be challenging. Currently, Inlet View suffers from significant sewer and roof problems. On November 5th of this year, there were more than 500 outstanding work orders. If this building presents such serious problems, why are we keeping students in place for an additional year when there are other options? To summarize, I believe that if students remain on the site, they will endure significant health, safety, and educational challenges. Moving to a different location presents the best option for a positive education.
Thank you very much. And that does conclude our first hour of testimony. You may find written public comment, I'm sorry, attached to the agenda in board docs. That brings us to our consent agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as listed on the main agenda.
Wait a second. Second. All right, moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. That brings us to item F, action items. I think I have that. Right. And we have several.
Madam President, I move to approve expulsions of the students associated with ASD incident
Okay. I need a second. I need a second. Those were the student hearings. Thank you. Online voting is open. Please vote. And that passes 7-0. Now we are on action items. Whenever you're ready, mister.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 063 and adopt a tentative agreement between the Anchorage School District and the General Teamsters Local 959 covering food service employees, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in this unit during the period between July 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2022.
Second. Okay, moved in second. I see that we do have a public comment on memorandum 063. Mr. Derek Musto. Derek, can you hear me? Star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My apologies.
No problem. You have three.
May I begin? Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Bishop, employees of the district, and guests in attendance are watching online. My name is Derek Musto. I am a business agent with Teamsters Local 959 and represent the food service cafeteria workers that service the central kitchen and an estimated 90 other locations across the school district. I'm speaking tonight on ASD memorandum number 63, adoption of the tentative agreement, General Teamsters Local 959 covering the food service employees. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the district's food service employees, many of which are unable to attend and speak in support of the administration's recommendation that the school board approve and adopt a tentative agreement between the district and the Teamsters, which is action item number four of tonight's agenda. Before I speak in support of the tentative agreement, I'd like to comment first about some of the conditions our members face for those that may not be aware of the work that they do. The Anchorage School District's food service workers are largely part-time, seasonal, part-time, seasonal, part-time, seasonal, part-time, seasonal, part-time, seasonal, The Anchorage School District's food service workers are largely part-time, seasonal, frontline workers that did not have the luxury or ability to work from home during the pandemic. They reported to work every day to make sure that the children of our community were safely and continually fed, and they performed day in and day out, taking on new responsibilities despite the numerous challenges of the pandemic in the workplace, as well as the challenges faced due to the tremendous amount of employee turnover to the local job market that continues to stress and strain their working conditions. Many food service and central kitchen employees average only five to six hours per day, can't afford insurance for their families, and they do not have the ability to collect unemployment during the summer or when there is no school. The tentative agreement on the agenda before you tonight has been negotiated in good faith by the district and the union, and it contains needed improvements that are supported by the workforce. The tentative agreement has since been voted on and ratified. On behalf of our members that service both the Anchorage School District and our community, I respectfully ask on their behalf that you approve and adopt the tentative agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any? I don't see anyone else signed up to speak on this memorandum. Okay. So the motion before you is to approve memorandum zero six three to adopt the tentative agreement, General Teamsters Local 595 for our food service employees. Any, uh, nine five nine, sorry. Any discussion? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I had asked this question earlier, but I hadn't gotten a response. I was curious if the administration had the results of the ratification vote. Is that something that could be shared now or something we'd have to get in the board connect? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I might defer to our Chief Human Resource Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through the President to Member Jacobs. I do not have that information at this time, Member Jacobs, but would happy, be having a follow-up in a board connect.
Is that, is that good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Let's vote. Michelle, your vote?
Yes.
Online voting is open. Remember, we're waiting on your vote, Mr. Higgin.
Oh, I go, um, yes. Sorry.
And that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. That brings us to item F five.
Madam President, I don't think we need a motion. Action on this was deferred, so it is appropriate to take up at this time memorandum zero two five along with the amendment and the amendment to the amendment that was made at the prior meeting.
That is correct. Thank you, Member Holloman. So give Katie just a minute. So no, no, we will take up the discussion where the board left off two weeks ago. And so before us is an amendment to an amendment to the amendment. We're going to do testimony first before the board deliberates and votes. I have Elizabeth Warman. I know she was, I don't see her in the queue. I'll try to come back. Sharice Bradley. Welcome, Sharice.
Good evening. My name is Sharice Bradley. I have four children enrolled in family partnership. Have you guys ever had the daunting task of searching the internet for information? It's really vast. I think we all know that. Have you ever had to ask your friends and family and even strangers on the internet for information that might help you make a decision in your life? This is what many homeschooling parents are required to face when choosing a curriculum to teach their children, site after site, and asking strangers and many family people. Many want, many people want to help other homeschool families, and they've created their own homeschool curriculums and materials, and it's not such a taboo way of teaching children anymore as it was when I was a child thirty years ago. There's a lot of material out there now. And then what if the curriculum that you choose is no longer a good fit for your child, and all of a sudden you need to change that curriculum? It's a daunting task. Family Partnership has helped me, as well as many other families, navigate the process. When I first enrolled a year and a half ago in the charter school, I was able to have a training session with my sponsor teacher and other first-time families. I was given emails, websites, phone numbers to the finance office, and other resources that I could utilize. I quickly learned where I could find a list of approved curriculums, what curriculums were covered financially, and also what curriculums were not covered financially. The list of curriculum, resources, rules, and regulations is exhaustive, and it's a lot to take in as a new homeschooling parent, especially for someone taking on a voluntary job, because teaching my children is voluntary and I don't get paid. I'm given, I am, however, given the choice of the curriculum I can use to choose to teach my children. At the last board meeting, I understood that was claimed that you're not trying to punish family partnership. It's simply wanting a way to hinder the future infractions. So why has it taken three years to ask that question today was my question when I kept thinking, listening to that? How do we make this not happen again? Family Partnership has shown that it solved the problem three years ago by not having the other infractions in those three years. My family in the last year and a half is proof that it has worked. I worked in the medical field before having children, and when administering medications to patients, it requires asking patients their correct information, and another person ensures you have the correct medication and dose for that patient. Family Partnership has a similar process now when helping parents purchase their curriculum. My experience has been this fall, I found some timeline cards that followed the Story of the World curriculum that I'm teaching my children. It's beneficial. I'm willing to pay out of pocket for it to utilize that resource. I hadn't seen all the cards in it, and I didn't know there was religious content. I wasn't sure. However, I found a website was approved vendor because they had nonreligious curriculum. I submitted my receipts for reimbursement. The cards hadn't been approved yet, it turned out, but my sponsor teacher, the curriculum coordinator, and the finance office all reached out to me to let me know. They explained it wasn't approved yet, and it couldn't be reimbursed yet. However, the curriculum coordinator was able to review the materials and found that some was approvable and some was not. They're taking the steps necessary to ensure that.
Thank you very much. Next, Matt Sims. Matt? Welcome, and you have three minutes.
I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about what a wonderful job Family Partnership is doing and the great way that they represent the best interests of the Anchorage School District and Anchorage as a whole. My wife and I have been homeschooling with Family Partnership for the last fourteen years. We've had two of our children graduate over the last two and a half years, and both are serving our country in the Space Force, not allowed to say what he does, and as a corpsman in the U.S. Navy. My wife and I chose FPCS because of the unlimited opportunities that a charter school allowed us for personalized education, sports, and small class sizes, both at home and in small group classes throughout the Anchorage area. This approach has allowed us to raise our kids in a way that we see fit while still meeting and exceeding the standards of ASD and our own high standards. My wife is a teacher with ASD, and she has been teaching since eighty-eight, or ninety-eight, excuse me. She understands the importance of personalized education and tailoring each class to each of the students. Seven years ago, we determined to adopt one of her students. She met this lad as he was being raised by his older brother. Prior to being brought into his brother's home, he was taken into custody by OCS. He and his brothers were left alone for many months by negligent parents. When our son was taken in, he had no education, no upbringing, and very little parenting, and a lack of opportunity. His brother enrolled him in FPCS because he was unable to get him into a brick-and-mortar school. Outbursts of anger, physical assaults, and many difficult personality traits were the norm. When he came to FPCS, he was not just a number. He was not just a student. He was a child in need of teaching, nurture, and love. He got that and more from us, but also from the staff and administration at FPCS. He's now thankfully a different kid, and a big part of that can be attributed to the classes and teachers that he's had while he's been at FPCS. As a board member in the past and currently, I understand the need to abide by rules and to make education a priority. Politics should take a backseat, and the education of students should be a priority. I believe that the school board should allow the increase of the enrollment cap of Dr. Parker's requested number of three thousand. Additionally, I'd like to state that the insistence on the board to limit the charter to a five-year provisional would be a huge detriment to the student body and the leadership. I know from experience how difficult it is to recharter and it can, and can be, and how detrimental this can be since it takes so much time and bandwidth from the principal, teachers, and the board. The concerns the board has noted are minor procedural concerns, and the religious curriculum issue was addressed many years ago by the principal who was in charge when that occurred. Dr. Parker is doing a fantastic job as principal, and the work that she is doing is above her approach. Please don't shackle her, the administration, and the APC due to the past actions of a previous principal and allow Family Partnership successfully be a bridge to success for all of our students, the community, and the nation as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Virginia Patton. Virginia? She's online. Star mute, Virginia to, uh, star six to unmute, Virginia. All right, Virginia, I'll come back to you. Looks like we're having some technical difficulty. Elizabeth Kittle? Hi, welcome.
My name's Elizabeth Kittle. This is my first time here, and I apologize. You can tell it's my first time. My phone has died with all my notes on it, so. I am a COVID homeschooling parent. I started homeschooling last year during COVID, and we chose Family Partnership, and it's been really wonderful for our family. Last year, or what, yeah, was it last year? Yes. When everything happened with COVID, my husband also lost his job. So there was a lot of stress on our family all of a sudden. And there was a teacher who spoke a few people ago and talked about how in a school setting, when you have structure and you have things that are, you can rely on, that brings a lot of healing, and I can testify that that's true in our family. As we started doing homeschool, as there was structure more in our family, I had children in two different charter schools, so suddenly bringing them home. And the online really wasn't working for my boys. And so having them home, and then my husband getting a job, and he actually works from home. So we're one of those crazy people where we're all at home. But actually, there have been a lot of healing, and I can testify there's something to consistency. I think we need that. I think if the pandemic has taught us anything, we look to the things that we can rely on for comfort. And when I heard about Family Partnership maybe only being five years or maybe having a cap on it, that alerted, alarmed me because I have other children who are not of ASD age yet. And I also just wondered, so in five years, what if this is not here? What does our family do? You know, like, what if my kids have gotten into this, and we really love it, and then it's kind of pulled out or things change? So I guess I'm just here to testify that it's really worked for us. It's been wonderful. I hope we can keep this going for ten years. I have more children who are very interested, and in case you're wondering, I do ask them every year if they want to homeschool. I did come from a charter school myself. I was a Diamond High graduate. Nothing against public school. Always keeping those choices open to my kids, but right now, we just really like it. So we'd like that consistency to be kept going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erisha Hardy? Erisha Hardy? Ms. Hardy? Oh, it's online. Don't see her. Okay, we'll try to come back. Claire Ellis? Welcome. You know the drill, right?
Yeah, thank you for hearing from me. As I stated before, I do believe we are witnessing the crumbling of the public education system as we know it. I never planned to be a homeschool family, ever, as I am an ASD teacher, but we are now going to be lifelong homeschool family. There are many more people choosing homeschool for personal reasons, safety concerns, and wanting to preserve their rights and freedoms. What I see coming down the line through the public system with my own eyes, there are more and more things that are starting to push against my own family's core values. We began this journey when teaching and learning was done virtually at the beginning of last year. We could not justify putting a six-year-old in front of a screen unsupervised for four to five hours a day, since I also was on Zoom for six hours a day. We continued homeschooling this year because my husband and I refused to put masks on our children. My daughter is thriving and flying through her curriculum without all of the common school distractions. I witness and teach the classes on a daily basis that she would be a part of, and I see the amount of disruptive behaviors that occur, the topics that are discussed by students, and the language that is spoken by students. I am beyond thankful that she is not being exposed to any of this by her choice to homeschool. Now, I love my job, and I love my school, and beyond that, I have great respect and love for the teachers in my building. I feel a calling to be there for these sweet children, but I am avoiding the negative influence that could be had if she was present in the building. She is receiving significantly less screen time than children that are in school. The vast majority of her work is done hands-on without hours in front of a screen. She spends her day doing schoolwork with my husband, who is the executive director of an inner-city compassionate ministry site, where my seven-year-old, no, currently eight-year-old, works at a food pantry and serves those that are less fortunate than she. As a former classroom teacher, I also assist her when I am not in school, and she is learning during all parts of her day, including the time she gets to go hunting and fishing while missing zero school. For the concerns that were listed by ASD regarding religious curriculum being purchased and the infractions that were made in the executive board settings, Family Partnership has been transparent and has clearly outlined those mistakes and clarified any misunderstanding. I believe grace should be given in a time where people are overworked and spread thin. Things are going to slip through the cracks. I understand as a public school teacher that it is a concern because it's federal money being spent. However, I'm always given clear guidelines of what I can and cannot purchase with my daughter's curriculum money. Family Partnership has shared their curriculum vetting process with the students and families, and they are committed to correcting the errors that did occur. Right now, there are tremendously far worse things occurring in the school buildings that are not being shared with the public regarding behaviors. And with the increase in families choosing to remove their children from the public school system for various reasons, I believe you will see a continued increase in families choosing homeschool, and by granting Family Partnership this ten-year renewal, you will better equip them to serve the families that are under their supervision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nicole Holta. Nicole? Yes. You have handouts that you can give up to Katie, please. Thank you. And you have three minutes.
My name is Nicole Holta, and I am the curriculum coordinator at Family Partnership. As one of the infractions being considered tonight relates to the past purchasing of religious curriculum, I wanted to share with you my role and responsibilities at Family Partnership and illustrate how our school works to correct that past infraction. You have before you a flow chart which illustrates the checks and balances in place for curriculum purchases at our school. First, parents submit a request in our online system. Every dollar that is reimbursed is entered here. It prompts our teachers to review them, and they can either approve them if they're curriculums they're familiar with, such as Saxon or Bookshark, or they can reject them if they know they have religious content and let the families know you can still use these materials, but we can't reimburse for them. If teachers are unsure, they refer the family to me. And at this point, the families typically bring all of the materials to our offices for me to review. I use the attached form for curriculum approval vetting, and I ask these questions. Is the purpose religious? Does it advance or inhibit religion? Does it quote scripture? Does it use religious pictures or images? Does it use religious terminology? Does it use Bible or religious stories to highlight concepts? If any of those are present, the curriculum can't be reimbursed. Oftentimes, though, both of these boxes at the bottom are checked yes and no because we can maybe pay for the flashcards or the drill practice, but not the teacher's manual or the student textbook. or the student textbooks. At that time, if it is approved, it goes to our reimbursement department, and they pass it to our business manager, the principal, the ASD director, and on forward. At that point, it's pretty smooth sailing, because most of these people assume the above-filter system has done its job. I want to point out that our reimbursement department has a direct line to me as well. If they have a request for something that they know is religious, like Abecca, for example, they always send the reimbursement request to me to double-check, are these number cards okay, these writing tablets? And I will tell them yes or no. And so what is new at Family Partnership since the infractions? My position as curriculum coordinator was established in August of 2020. The curriculum approval request form and vetting process is new. Dr. Parker, um, in spring of 2021, paid an addenda to teachers to chunk out, update, and refresh our curriculum resource database to make sure it is current and accurate. I personally vetted 74 English curriculums. And we train our teachers each fall on religious curriculum. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. John Zimmerman. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you for having me back. I appreciate correspondence and communication with you all throughout the week. So I'm John Zimmerman, parent of seven, one Family Partnership graduate, four who are currently enrolled, and two that are not quite of age just yet. I'm also a new member on the APC at Family Partnership and one of the newest members just starting in July of this year, having been voted in last spring. So we should talk about infractions just for a little bit. So at the last meeting, the school was characterized kind of in a negative light, talking about breaking the state law and purchasing issues and breaking contract. And I think that brought our school into a, a very sharply defensive stance. So being aware of these details, rather than refute severity or talk about that, I'd rather take a look at what we've done to respond to the root causes. You just heard great information from Claire and Nicole, so I don't know that I need to go over that. I feel like that response has been robust, and the matter is thoroughly resolved. So on to the other infractions. Those are serious procedural errors. We, we broke ASD School Board Policy ER 6181 last spring when staff members were in the executive session to discuss the principal's evaluation. This happened also two and a half years ago, and that was just weeks after the new policy was communicated. And so there was a regrettable recurrence that just happened recently. So as a partial remedy to this, our entire APC attended the AASB annual training in October this year, and it was very helpful. Additionally, we added a training segment to each one of our meetings on Robert's Rules and Procedures. And our legal risk committee is meeting this week to discuss compliance and how we can do this the best way. So as a new member, I feel like I can speak to the onboarding process since these violations occurred, and I can verify that all the documents that pertain to school governments, governance within the district and the state of Alaska are provided and referenced in the new board member packet. And a healthy discussion of these matters has been, has been a constant theme of my time with the school. So you see, as an APC, we desire full compliance with all applicable laws and regulations. We actively seek resolution when we discover that we have failed to follow the rules, and I'm confident that this APC is doing all in our power to address and resolve these matters. So based on the systems and trainings that, that we have done and continue to do, we want you, as our school board, to be fully competent in our efforts to address these issues that will inevitably arise. And please affirm the tireless work of our administration, our teachers, staff, and APC by granting a full 10-year charter renewal and assure our students the best and most stable future in our school. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Tyler Goldod. Goldade?
Golddaddy. Golddaddy.
Golddaddy, okay.
Yeah, it's a unique one.
All right.
All right, well.
Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you all for your service. I recently joined the APC board, and I have a sense of what you guys are doing, and I, it's, it's important work, and I appreciate it. I have two students that attend Family Partnership, and when I joined the board last March, just in time for the first full, not last March, two Marches ago, just in time for the first full year of pandemic schooling, it was, it was pretty wild. We, we were asked by the district to take on more students, and we answered by taking on over 800 students. We went from 700 to 1,650 students. It was a huge ask for our school and for our board, as we put in long meeting after long meeting, followed by emergency meetings, to do what we could to be prepared for what is a year that I think everyone that was involved with will never forget. We hired additional admin staff. We doubled, we more than doubled our teaching staff. We trained the admin. We trained the teachers, and we processed more reimbursements and requisitions than the previous two and a half years combined. At times, as we were adapting to the, the ever-changing enrollment numbers, some students or some teachers were assigned upwards of 200 students. Typically, a normal load is between 85 and 100. The entire staff at Family Partnership took on a massive load, worked long days, and dug deep to serve ASD families and students to the best of their ability. And just zooming out a little bit, I'm really proud of how our school responded, and I am excited, very excited about the future. And in this, in the future, we're looking forward to continue to be in a leader among charter schools in Alaska. We're looking forward to growing our school, and we're looking forward to more effectively, to continue to more effectively partner with Anchorage School District, families, and students to deliver excellent service and unique opportunities for education. With all of that said, we're talking about the 10-year versus the five-year and enrollment caps. I, I think if we could do the 10-year, it, it is merited, and it will save us 1,000 hours in the future. And those 1,000 hours can go to the excellent cause of serving our families and, and students. And it would be great if the cap could be as high as you're comfortable, so that we don't have anything in the way of our growth.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Lucia Putnam. I probably said that wrong, I apologize. Welcome, you have three minutes. And state your name, please.
Hi, I am Lucia Putnam.
Lucia, thank you.
Uh, thank you, board members and community for taking this time to hear the concerns. I am a parent, and though I will be speaking on behalf of my own family, I personally know several other families who share a similar sentiment to that which I will discuss. I was sad to learn that Family Partnership Charter Schools' contract with ASD faces alterations in ways that will greatly hinder the program's progression and longevity. I found it odd that ASD is choosing to alter Family Partnership's contract over issues from the past that have already been addressed and resolved by the charter school. I truly hope that ASD will take time to closely examine just how cooperative Family Partnership has been in adapting to and adhering to an array of ASD policies with Family Partnership's parameters as a charter or alternative school option for families within the municipality. Family Partnership has been a tremendous resource for our family as we navigate educating our children. It's clear that they have a vested interest in the advancement of the students by exploring a wider range, a wide range of education options that their diverse community of students thrive on. No one child's education needs are the same, and Family Partnership acknowledges that, rising to meet the challenge of helping each child along their education journey. As a child, my family relocated countless times within the Anchorage municipality. This has resulted in a diverse history of experiences within the public sector of ASD. With that, I have experienced within, I, I have experienced education within the north, south, and east parts of Anchorage. I know that the public system here in Anchorage is just not the right fit for my children. I am grateful for alternative education options and have been delighted by Family Partnership Schools, Charter Schools' take on student-led, parent-directed education. If Family Partnership's contract with ASD is altered in such a way that would limit Family Partnership's prosperity and even lead to potential closure due to factors that Family Partnership has already brought to ASD's attention, I know that my family will not choose a public school classroom for our secondary option. Sadly, we would explore other homeschool-centered schooling options. We were hoping that we wouldn't ever have to. Our school, our.
For your time in hearing my concerns and that of my family. Thank you very much. And that ends public testimony on memorandum number 025.
That, President?
Yes, Member Donley.
Yeah, I, I've twice previously disclosed at our meetings that my wife and my twins are in eighth-grade at Family Partnership Charter School. And as you all know, they're enrolled for one year at a time. And this memorandum or this particular proposal that, that before the boards would have no impact on this school year whatsoever, because it's for, it only applies to the next year coming after this and then on. And the question of the five versus 10 years can have no impact on my eighth graders, as they will be graduating in four years. Accordingly, I have seen no conflict of interest for myself involving dealing with Family Partnership, but, but I recognize there's, uh, there's a fact, and then there's perception. So, um, at this point, since some people have objected or expressed concerns about me voting on it, I'll go ahead and recuse myself from voting on this.
All right, thank you, Member Donley. That is, uh, the chair accepts your recusal. We will continue with our deliberation and our voting. So I, I think I need to, amendment, I am the maker of amendment number one, and I, I wish to rescind that at this time. It is not my intent to cause extra work through our corrective action plan, um, based on what I've heard for the, over the last couple of weeks. And of course, discussed during our last meeting. I no longer wish to be the maker of this motion, so I was, I rescind it. Dora, do you agree?
Point of clarification, do you mean amendment one or?
Amendment. Amendment to the amendment.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. So that one is gone. That one would have required a corrective action plan, um, given to the administration. So I, I, I rescind. The maker and the second, seconder of that motion rescinds it. So now we are back to amendment number one. And I think that was Member Lessons. We'll have it up in just a minute. And I, I did fail to go back to, if I can have a point of, uh, I don't even know what to call it. I overlooked an individual in the queue. Is that a point of personal privilege? What is that? Help me out, Claire.
I think the chair could correct that.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'd like to correct that at this time. We have Virginia Patton, uh, who was in the queue. I, I went to her once, and then I, we had some technical difficulty. So Virginia, could you go on and do your three-minute test, testimony?
Yes, I appreciate the time. I don't know exactly what happened over there. Um, I really am here just to kind of reiterate what's already been said, to address the board meeting that occurred last month. I tuned into the board meeting out of concern for Family Partnership's charter. While listening, excuse me, I kept thinking about this meeting all the next morning. I kept hearing the voices of the students and the parents and the leaders within this school going through my mind. And the first thought I was thinking was that many of them sacrificed anxiety, bad weather, they gave up their time, which was considerable, just to showcase the amazing success story that is Family Partnership. In fact, after listening to several testimonies, I actually cheered up at the passion and common sense that really was being echoed during this, this meeting. And it's obvious that everyone involved were there for the benefits of the students. But it did seem to me, and an observer who has no students in ASD, that some members of the board turned a deaf ear to the plea of the students and parents. And it is my belief that the school board is there for the children, for their education and future. And so when I heard them focusing on an infraction that happened several years ago under different leadership, even after Dr. Bishop told the board these infractions were corrected and not continued under current Family Partnership leadership, was actually in my mind just misguided and one-sided, and was very confusing for me. Now, um, it is my understanding that these issues have been addressed, and it was recently stated that. It is important to note that the board has granted 10-year charters to less successful and smaller schools. So this discussion the board delved into at the last meeting didn't make sense to me. I feel the board should be rewarding success, not stifling it. And since the addendum, I, I was very confused about the addendum to the addendum, but since that is being withdrawn, I'm not even going to issue any more comment regarding that. I'm just going to close and ask you not to silence the voices of these students and parents and staff of Family Partnership and grant them the 10-year renewal with no enrollment cap. I, as an observer and a community member, feel the students, staff, and parents of this district deserve to have their voices heard and considered. Thank you for your time. Thank you for getting back to me and not forgetting about me. I appreciate very much.
You're absolutely welcome. Thank you. So, board, that brings us back to amendment one. Member Lessons, if you want to speak to your amendment.
Again, again, all right, well, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I continue to support the 10-year renewal of Family Partnership. I, I see this as an opportunity to continue to reimagine education here in Anchorage in ways that help individual students really thrive, and to me, that's really exciting. You know, I'll comment that the, the cap of 1850, which I wrote in this amendment, that was out of deference to the violations, which I, I fully believe have been addressed. We've received itemized memos showing exactly how and exactly when and exactly where those, those issues have been. I don't expect to see them again in the future. So I'm actually on the fence about whether the enrollment cap of 1850 is something that will serve our students at Family Partnership and their families well, or whether it should be at the full 3,000. I would appreciate hearing other board members' perspectives. And I will add that as an aside, I have a fuller understanding now that Family Partnership, along with Frontier and PIDEA, they form ASD's correspondence students. And there is a, there's a bill out there, House Bill 78, which might change the, the way that correspondence students are factored into the state foundation formula. And frankly, I was really shocked at how much money is going to Galena for correspondence students. This is just to show, and my sense is, although I don't know the number, that a lot of those students that are going to Galena are Anchorage. If we were to expand Family Partnership, I believe that some of those, there would be space, there would be capacity at Family Partnership to incorporate some of those students that are currently sending, enrolling in Galena with the IDEA program, or maybe others across the state. So I think there are lots of reasons to consider supporting Family Partnership's 10-year charter and potentially an extension up to the 3,000 as requested by Dr. Parker. I'd be interested to hear from the board. Member Higgins?
Thank you. I, I have a, a post to this when I try to solve a problem. I like to start with a good problem statement, then analyze the options before we argue about the solutions, okay? And, and the problem here is, that's presented by the administration, is four flaw, four decisions that were made. The last one was this year. So when we talk. So when we talk about historically, it's not really much historically when it's May of this year. So I just want to clarify that. And so we've got some compliance concerns. I mean, they're not ancient history, they're relatively recent, and they're significant. My thing is to get to analyzing the options. I don't know how much will help the administration to maintain or to ensure compliance by going with five years rather than 10. That's one issue. And the other one is, I don't know how much it impacts really the charter school if they have five years versus 10. So if I'm looking at the options here as to what the impact would be, those are two questions that I really don't feel like I got a good sense for. I do feel like there needs to be insurance of compliance, and I think there needs to be consistency that if we have charter schools of any nature, they're making, you know, some decisions that are really outside the realm of what they're supposed to do, there's accountability, there's consequences, because that ensures some level of accountability in the future. That's what we're talking about. And to the degree that will help the administration to ensure compliance on this, if that's what I'm hearing, that's important to me. If there's really an impact, other than the fact that I have to go through the nuisance again of five versus 10 years, I don't know that that's that big of an impact to them at all, but it's more or less saying this is a, you know, letter of reprimand if you want, or whatever you want to, it's a low, it will be low level, they're still going to allow continued increase in participation rate. So that's the question I, and I rose it first to really to the superintendent. How effective, how beneficial is it going with a five-year versus a 10-year plan that's going to help us monitor and control to make sure there's compliance?
Through the President to Mr. Higgins, actually, the recommendation that was provided from administration kind of did its job. It was to make sure that we are serious about how to work through business. And there is a few comments made in open testimony, which really, it causes some cognitive dissonance in our brains because we keep saying, I have nothing against a public school, but I like this. Well, family partnership is a public school. Therein lies the issue that we have, is that by public entities as a school district, we receive public funds. Really, an employee testified that, well, I know you're worried about the federal money. This isn't federal money. This is state and local money. And so we want to ensure just that we move forward. And I have confidence in the administration, in the board. In fact, there was another infraction about to happen, and what I heard last time from the APC chair was that he stopped it in its tracks. So I really do, and I feel as though the school people feel that as well. The 1850, you know, I'm just going to address that, that was, in really working with the APC chair, when we did five years, he wanted to grow 10% a year. They have a limit of 1,500 this year, but they only have about 1,250 enrolled. So we're under enrollment this year. So I just figured, okay, and kind of rounded it off, 600 kids in the next five years. After really having the five years, we talked with the APC chair and we said, you know, I mean, this isn't to do more work, it isn't to signal failure. It really is to say, this is serious stuff, because at the end of the day, you and I hold the bag. Well, I won't after June 30th, but you know, you just can't mess with other people's money. And we just have to understand that when we have a contract with the board and we say, these are the rules we're going to follow, that you follow the contract. There is no other like consequence, you follow the contract or not. I am absolutely confident, though, that given a 10-year, because we even wrote in something afterwards that I was going to say is like, have two more years and then, you know, go for a 10, but I'm confident that we're going to move forward. It's going to be a successful school. I would love to also compete for statewide correspondence, but the same reason that people went to that statewide is the same reason that some people leave neighborhood schools to go to a charter school, or leave a charter school to go to a homeschool charter. So it really is in the idea of what fits our kids. But I am super competitive, so I would want to win back all those kids. And so, to your question, five, 10, again, I don't think that those are magic numbers. I think that it's meaning to the people who wrote this and to feel successful. I don't think it's an unsuccessful school. It was just to signal, we've got to be serious that when you take a responsibility, a contract, you have to follow it. That's all. But I'm confident that 10 years is going to carry out this school and that this series of incidences have been taken seriously. Thank you.
Member Holloman.
Well, I actually wanted to say a number of things that Member Higgins said, and like Member Higgins, I will not let that stop me from saying it again, just for the emphasis. And one of the things I did want to lead with is, yes, family partnership is an Anchorage School District school, just like any of our neighborhood or ordinary brick and mortar schools. It's a unique component and it caters to folks that have different circumstances. And I say that as someone whose child was a family partnership student 15 years ago. And I didn't know then if they had a 10-year charter or a one-year charter, or if the whole thing might close up, their offices weren't as nice, and the whole thing seemed a little shakier back then. One of my best friends was an administrator there for a long time, not the one you had issues with. But really, none of this has anything negative about the school or what it's meant to students. I also don't think that whether it's a five-year or 10-year has any impact on how well students will do, how the school relates to parents, or any of the normal day-to-day operations. It is, I think, kind of a, about as painless a sanction to where when something is mismanaged and there wasn't a willingness to correct it immediately, that we either take no action or we take some action. And the action here is to simply say, you've got to come back in five years. I'm sure there's some additional paperwork, no one likes that, but it doesn't cast any doubt on the future of the school to me. No one wants to close it. No one wants to restrict it. We want it to go ahead, but we do want everything to happen within those guidelines. So I support the original motion by the administration for five years, and I similarly do not doubt that five years from now, it will be an absolute slam dunk that it'll be approved unless something dramatic has happened, and I'm pretty confident that it won't. So if I thought this was going to impact how parents related to the school, I wouldn't want to support it. If I thought it was going to restrict their resources or limit the very good work that they do, I would not. But this is more a paperwork and supervision role by the administration over part of the organization that has a lot of autonomy. The one big difference between our charters and our regular neighborhood schools is they do have autonomy, and they can wander off the reservation pretty far without the ability of the superintendent to take direct action. And they're given that latitude so they can do what they want to do. This doesn't change that. It simply puts a shorter window of reapproval on it. So I do hope no one at the school takes it as a negative or a lack of confidence. It's simply, I think, the administration ensuring compliance, which is part of their job, and I expect family partnership to be here as long as the Anchorage School District is. Thank you.
So we are now, we are deliberating on the amendment number one, but you spoke to amendment, the original amendment.
Saying I would vote down amendment number one.
Okay, all right. Oh, Carl, yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I first wanted to, again, express appreciation for everyone who's come to take time to testify on this issue. I think it's significant importance and the options that our families have is a strength of the district, and we need to continue to embrace that. I believe I support the amendment to the motion as written. I think the goal, as Dr. Bishop stated, ultimately is compliance, and whether or not, I don't know that there's a, I can find my way to a measurable difference in if the APC and the administration, who have clearly indicated that they are working hard to remedy the underlying issues, if that would be significantly more measurable if a five-year charter were implemented. On the converse, there is significant impact in terms of a lease or the renewal process that is measurable. With that said, I think that there was a great question asked during testimony today that why now are we addressing things that happened three years ago? And I think that there's a valid reason for that and that the process is looked at, you know, with the time the charter expires. There is language in our board policy which supports, you know, investigation authority and other actions the board could take should other issues occur. And I, like, I think the majority of the board feel that things are headed in the right direction, so it's not a huge concern that I have with this current group of individuals. But it is comforting knowing that we have that authority and maybe it's an avenue that we just need to be more directly involved in should something else come up. And so I think there's an avenue for more board involvement as well as supporting a great program that's doing some amazing things with students. Regarding the enrollment cap, which I think Member Lessons asked for feedback on, knowing that the FPCS enrollment dropped significantly this past year due to, I'm assuming in part ASD's return to full-time in-person education, and knowing that there is a process in place for the charter school to come back and have that reviewed, I'm comfortable with that number, knowing that it was generated in part with APC's feedback. And so I support the amendment as is, I believe. Thank you.
Member Wilson.
I would like some clarification. I believe from Member Lessons could probably provide this. On the last sentence of the amendment, pending a favorable review, family partnership charter school could adjust the enrollment cap. Can you speak to that sentence, please?
Again, yeah, this was, thank you for the question. This was my attempt at shifting the original recommendation to a 10-year with a little bit of board oversight. And so that was, that was the intent of that line. And with, and it was an acknowledgement of family partnerships interest in expanding the cap to 3,000. That was my understanding of their objective. And I thought, well, maybe we'll hold off on that 3,000 and stick with this 1850 as recommended pending a favorable, really a conversation, a review of having no contract violations. Does that explain my thinking?
I also have a question on that last line. It seems to me that pending favorable review, family partnership can re, can come back to the board for that. I mean, they can't just decide on them on their own. So I think there's some tweaking to the language there. Because right now, it says pending a favorable review, so we say, yes, everything is kosher, everything's good, then family partnership can just say, okay, we're going up to, but that's not the intent of the motion.
So perhaps I would need to amend my amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
Or somebody else can.
Or somebody else, somebody else could do this, too. I would move to amend my amendment and have it read, the last line read pending a favorable review, the Anchorage School Board could adjust the family partnership charter school enrollment cap.
Yeah, and I think, do we have to wait? And my other question, before I get, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's second. Katie, did you get that? Okay. Yes. Dr. Bishop?
You just made a motion for something that you actually already have the authority to do. So if the purpose is for pending a favorable review, family partnership may request from the board, you know, to increase. I mean, basically, you, the board, the board can already do that at any time. So you would want family partnership to make a request, you know, or just reference family partnership could adjust the enrollment cap to 3,000, or put in a number that you want, if you want.
Okay. All right, so, Member Lessons, how do you want that to read? Pending a favorable review, family partnership charter school could, what you got, Katie?
So I would need to retract the amendment that I just made.
No, you, you are amending your amendment to, for clarity. We're trying to get that language down. It's the same amendment. Okay. Hold on a minute. Which way do you want to go? Let's get this part done, and then I'll.
There was two different, so which amendment to the amendment? Pending a favorable review, does it want to be Anchorage School Board or family partnership?
Family.
Can request.
Can request an enrollment cap. Can, yes, sure. Family partnership charter school can request an adjusted enrollment cap or an increase to the enrollment cap.
Up to.
Up to 3,000 students. Thank you. Okay. So before I give everybody else a second round, I would like to, oh, Dora, I'm sorry, you had a question, but did you have any comments?
You actually asked the question that I would have asked.
Okay. So, and again, I'm not as concerned with the number, the cap, the enrollment cap, although I understand that, you know, I just go back a year ago when we were COVID hit and we were trying to find options for students, and several programs, and family partnership was one of them. They stepped up, they never complained, they never wavered, and I appreciate that. Lots of people I know are still there. Some are still not there. I mean, they came back to a regular school, but I do appreciate that. And according to the timeline, there were already infractions, but we understood them. But from, from the administrative side, I mean, I appreciate the administrations, because we wouldn't be talking about this if it was just a 10-year. We would not, I would not have focused on the need for training, the need for continued education, having checks and balances, not just over on this side of the house, but everywhere in this district. And so the administration did exactly what it needs, needed to do, to tell the board, give the board an idea of what its concerns were so that we could discuss them, figure out what happened, and make sure it doesn't happen again. Now, because we're all human, something else is going to happen. It may not be family partnership, it may be someplace else. So I am inclined to support the amendment to, both these amendments, amendment one and the amendment to it, simply because I believe, you know, if we are, as a district, if we are found to be non-compliant for a, for a big outside entity, they don't come in and say, okay, you can't have classes for 10 days. No, they come in and they say, look, you messed up, you got to fix it, and this is what you're going to do to fix it. So we arrive to conciliate, we come up with a plan, and I, well, from what I have heard and seen, family partnership has come up with a plan. They have taken it serious, and they have, they have, they have put checkpoints and balances in place, which is much like what we would do with the Office of Civil Rights or anybody else who came in and told us that we messed up. So for that reason, I will be supporting the 10-year, and I think with the two-year checkpoint, I can support the enrollment cap. Member Higgins.
Just one question for the superintendent. If there were serious problems, I mean, there was another charter school where, when I was on the thing, that had some really significant issues on finances, but if there was a serious problem with that, what is the enforcement options that you view that you would ask for the board's support to do?
Through the President to Member Higgins, well, initially, just like any issue, you try to work it out, you know that, at the lowest level and it moves up. If there wasn't movement, really, I mean, alerting the board to the contract, and then the board, these contracts, they're a contract with you, is what a charter is, so then you --
So then you, it would come before the board again if it was a serious issue.
Question, comment? Member Jacob, did I see your, no? Oh, Member Holloman and then Wilson.
Because there is an amendment on the table, I can't offer one. I personally would rather decouple the enrollment cap from favorable review or violations. I don't see those things as going together. I would like for Family Partnership to serve as many students as it can do a good job with. And if that's 1,000, it's 1,000. If it's 5,000, it's 5,000. To me, the, the issue about contract issues and all should be in a separate lane. So what's?
So let's do, let's finish this one and then you can offer yours.
Okay. I'll do that.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay. Dora? And Ellie, if you have any comments? You did? Okay.
I will repeat everything you said, Margot, although I agree with much of what you said. So I did visit the school. I got to spend some time talking to the staff, with the principal, learning about the changes that have been made based on the errors that happened along the way. I've heard, not just through testimony here, but heard from community members about their support for Family Partnership and how it worked for their students. I continue to advocate for alternative and optional programs for our students and families that work for our, for our students because each of our students learns differently. That's just how, how kids work. So I do support the 10-year. I do support the, the language in place. The 1,850 enrollment, my, my only concern with, right off the bat, saying they can take 3,000 students is, I know there was some, as was testified, there was a tremendous amount of work putting into doubling the enrollments, the enrollments of your students overnight, basically. And I would hate to see the, those staff members take the stress of doing that, you know, for the next couple of years to increase that enrollment. So that is why I would support the amendment of 1,850 students and then looking in a couple of years to readjust that enrollment cap to increase that so that, that the school can plan for the number of students they're bringing in so they can successfully, really, truly continue to give that personal type of education to each of the families that, that so many families here have testified about.
All right. Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a question for the maker, I guess. I read the amendment to the amendment to say that after the 2024, 2025 school year, a request can be made. So it's not a requirement that it be made and that the requirement could be made for less than 3,000. But it should not exceed 3,000. Am I reading the intent correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I guess I'll say that, knowing that to be the case, knowing that we can make a decision with circumstances that are apparent at that time, I believe I would support this as well. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's vote on the amendment to the amendment to modify that last sentence to read pending a favorable review, Family Partnership Charter School can request an increase to the enrollment cap up to 3,000. Shall we vote? Student? Yes, I mean, Ms. Shaw. Everybody else? Okay, that five, that five, that passes, five nays, one extension. All right, moving on, we're back now at the, whenever you ready, Katie. We'll give Katie a minute so we can see it. Almost there. All right, so we are back to. This is. Yeah. Dora? We're back to the amendment.
Since, since.
To the amendment.
Donley has recused himself, so should there be a different second?
That was done prior to, yeah, we don't need to change that.
Thank you.
All right, so the, the motion before you now, as amended, to amend the recommendation from the administration, I see a hand. Member Holloman?
Well, I think we've done a real interesting thing. And unfortunately for me, to amend it the way I was thinking would actually be reversing the impact of that amendment. So I really can't make it properly. We've in essence told Family Partnership they can't expand for three years.
Right.
I don't understand that. And I, I, I think that's unfortunate and I hope they'll ignore it. If the situation warrants, we'll come back and ask the board to reverse themselves, which I think would be an excellent thing for a future board to do.
Yeah, and remember, Member Holloman, I do think that Dr. Bishop spoke to that sooner, earlier, that we could do it at any time, but.
Actually, the original request over the years, the APC was very clear in only wanting to grow 10% a year. So it wasn't going from the 1,500 to 3,000. It was going from that in 10 years. So the 1,850 covers the first five years sufficiently, anyway.
And I'm sure nothing unusual will happen for a couple of years.
My point is that it wasn't the original request to begin with.
Yeah, I, depending on what happens in the coming year or so, it may be in the interest of ASD and Family Partnership to expand dramatically. And we've, in essence, implied that they can't for three years, even though our general policy says you can. So I hope they'll remember that part of it. I, I think it's just a case of where we worked ourselves into some awkward wording that if someone reads it with fresh eyes in a week or two, it won't make a lot of sense. And I, I hate doing stuff like that. Again, I, I support the program doing what they're able to do well. And I think we've gotten a little bit convoluted. So, thank you.
So you're not gonna offer an amendment at this time?
Well, in essence, I would strike the last sentence, but that would be a reversal of what the amendment was under Roberts. That really wouldn't be proper. It would be a motion to reconsider. And it wouldn't be in order. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, I forgot, where are we? We're voting on, all right. Did you have a comment, Member Jacobs?
Yeah, the main motion, if I could.
I'm sorry?
On the main motion? Yeah, it was amended, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I appreciate Dr. Bishop's comments about, not just this meeting, but last meeting, about the future of what education looks like, maybe for many families, what Family Partnership offers. And so I know you're competitive. I would wager that you have seven folks on the dais here who thought it was great to run a citywide election, who might be competitive as well. And so, you know, for the duration that you're here and then working with the next administration, I think we could be partners in earning back the trust of some of the families that have gone through statewide correspondence programs. And I'm looking forward to being a part of that conversation. So looking forward to laying the groundwork for that. Thank you.
Other comments before we vote? Yes.
I just wanted to say that from my, like, experience, I wasn't, like, aware of what Family Partnership was until a couple of years ago. And the people that I've met who attend there, they really like it. And it's normally big families that are all homeschool kids. They've never gone to public school or go to KCC for, you know, one class. It's mostly, like, church families. They're really big fans of Family Partnership. Like, I haven't heard anything negative about it. So it's just, from my point of view, I've never even been to the school. It seemed like a really good program that should be, you know, extended to 10 years. I'm not so sure about the amount cap. I just, from my point of view, I, it seems like a very good school.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Yes?
I just have one question. I know that Member Donley made reference about the fact that you've got a connection with family with the school. I don't, I don't think that the board here has said that represents a conflict from you to voting, I don't think, if I understand correctly. Because I've got grandkids in schools and I'm gonna vote on things that are best interest for the kids. I expect you to be able to vote the same way. And I would think that you represent all kids and that includes the charter schools. So I'm just, I hate to see a split vote.
We, we decided, I accepted his recusal. Thank you. So, let's vote. Next? Oh, not next. Vote, just vote. You can give her a voice, just give her a thumbs up. And that passes four yays to two nays, one extension. Let's, we're going to the main motion as amended. And you can see the. It's the whole thing. It was Kelly. And Donley, I thought. Let's see, okay. Do you want who seconded? I think it was Dave. Let's go back to the original motion as presented by the superintendent, by the staff, right? Because it was for five years.
Yeah, she's trying to pull it up.
She's trying to pull it up. I thought it was Donley, but. All right, so let's take a five-minute conference break while Katie pulls up that and we'll come right back.
I think we passed the amendment.
We wanted to amend the amendment, which is the main motion. Yeah, all that was amendment two.
That's where I lost track, too, for a minute. We moved to table.
It's not wiped out the main motion.
Oh, it did? So we don't have another one?
Well, it does in board docs.
Oh, you do.
Carl, do you recall who was the seconder on the 17, on the 16?
My, my recollection was it was Dave.
It was Dave?
Yeah. But I, if he recused himself, I actually think it's problematic for him to.
Even though we carried over?
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, welcome back. And now I'm voting on the main motion.
As amended.
As amended.
Basically, the amended amendment number one.
Yeah.
Motion as amended with Andy moving it and Dave seconding it from the sixteen.
All right, we are still missing a couple of board members.
There was a a line in the background.
Yeah, no problem. Uh just for the record, our uh Ms. Shaw had to leave. Um. Just for the record, so it shows that she is not here. We are now ready to vote on the main motion as amended. It is before you. Any questions, discussion on the main motion as amended?
Madam President, just a point of information. I think there's a typo there in the first line. Do we correct that, Katie, while we're voting?
Yeah. Okay. Wait, she's not, she'll she'll fix it. She just don't want it. We can't lose it again. All right, we're ready to vote. And that passes six yays uh and one extension. All right, that concludes memo number twenty five.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero four seven that the full school board formally discuss and vote on a potential waiver of attorney-client privilege for legal opinions provided to the district during recent and ongoing community workforce agreement, CWA policy discussions.
Okay, this is for the CWA. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. I I think I heard Higgins. All right. Are there any? What what is the will of the body with memo number forty seven? Uh member Donley? Did you have a? There, yeah, we don't have any. There is no public testimony. Let me just double check. Let me double check as well. No, we're good.
Well, Madam President, um I think this uh memo presents us with an opportunity to fix something that um I think we need to fix, and that's um the whole issue of legal memorandums related to memorandums put forth before the board uh being subject to attorney-client privilege until the board says they're not. I think that's the inverse of what uh the Public Records Act actually calls for. And presumption should be it's a public document unless there's a reason articulated why it isn't. And I think I strongly support memorandum forty seven because it 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 opens up and gives the public this additional knowledge and facilitates debate on this issue. But I also think we should do that for memo sixty two um because we have a legal opinion there, but now it's going to be on the action agenda in two weeks and we're not going to have time to make it available to the public prior to that. So in an effort to fix that problem and get that legal uh opinion open to the public uh before we have to be voting on it or it's up for a vote next meeting, I would move to add the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty one Cedar Filippi legal opinion regarding memo sixty two to this memorandum, which is memo forty seven, and waive any attorney-client privilege related to that November fifteenth, tw- two thousand twenty one opinion.
Okay, so I I'm not sure I I'm following you, member Donley. So you want to amend memorandum forty seven to include something that hasn't come before the board yet?
No, it's on our action agenda, and it's also been distributed to the members of the board. For the next two weeks from now.
It's on our non-action.
It's on our non-action tonight, but it's going to be on the action agenda in two weeks.
So but this this uh yeah, okay, so we I guess we need a second so we can discuss.
I'll second for discussion.
Well, point of point of order, are we um effectively, this this motion, as I understand it, would modify the agenda by making something that's on non-action and action item. And we've already voted to not, or there was already a motion that failed to um to a similar effect. And so I I I don't, Mr. Hallman, Mr. Vice President, maybe you can chime in on whether I'm we're pursuing the same path again, I guess.
I do not remember the details of the previous motion clearly enough.
When we started the meeting tonight?
So I'll restate, uh this this I believe effectively um it it would have the same effect as to how we tried to modify, how how member Donley attempted to modify our agenda tonight, which I think can't be done under Robert's rules.
It's. Member Donley?
Yeah, it's completely distinguishable. The I objected to something being put on the non-action calendar. This deals with the executive attorney-client privilege on a memorandum, maybe see. Those are two separate issues.
I I would say that a motion to amend the agenda is always in order, um but it does require a supermajority at this point.
But this.
The memo, okay, hold on. The memorandum before us, right, the your amendment, the memorandum as it was read, as it was presented, is actually relative to the CWA agreement. You're wanting to expand that to include memorandum forty two, which is a a non-action item? Or am I misunderstanding it?
I don't think you're, I'm not adding memorandum forty seven or memorandum sixty two. What I'm what I'm saying is that we're going to also, in addition to waiving the attorney-client privilege for the memorandum, the the legal opinions that are addressed currently by memo forty seven, but we're also going to waive the attorney-client privilege that is that we've been given that addresses memo sixty two. That's what I'm amending. That's what I'm proposing to amend this to do, to just disclose the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty one Cedar Filippi legal opinion to the public.
If I can just read memorandum forty seven before it was amended, it was that the full that the full school board formally discuss and vote on a potential waiver of attorney-client privilege for legal opinions provided to the district during recent and ongoing community work service agreement policy discussions. That has nothing to do with ninety three twenty three, other than they both require uh 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 hold a legal opinion. Yes.
My sense is that the intention is to improve the transparency of the non-action item. And I guess my question is, how can we make the legal document that is currently not public for the agenda items slated two weeks from now? How can that currently private information be made public? And I think that member Donley is trying to maneuver to do that. And I approve of the idea of transparency. So although this is peculiar, I'm not sure if there's any other way. But that's my understanding of his intention.
So perhaps uh the amendment needs to be more uh this applies to the CWA. This this doesn't just apply to uh community, I mean, to uh trans uh uh attorney-client privilege at large. It applies to the CWA. So now we're going to add memo forty two, which is our board policy to this amendment. And that doesn't make sense to me. Remember uh Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I I'm in favor, um at least, you know, until we're finished with the discussion. I'm entering to to debate with being in favor of releasing both memos. I just don't, I don't know that I am a fan of how we're attaching the two into this. Um and so if this if this motion, the original motion passes, um as written, that we could also um use chair would be willing to attach the related memo for um or the related legal opinion from memo sixty two uh to the tonight's agenda, just tomorrow or later this week. I I think that might have a similar effect without having to um modify motions and things, you know, Robert's rules tonight. Um because I think that would be the intent, um maybe could get things done a bit simpler.
Other comments before I say mine? Member Higgins?
Yeah, um thoroughly confused. Uh let me think. What I'm hearing is that, you know, the board gets, and the the public needs to know what's going on too. But if we get a legal opinion that's to influence how we vote on an issue, we want the public to have the access to that information because that's being considered in any actions being taken. It's public policy. It's information that's being used to influences. And if you can't see that, then you can't respond to it. And I have, I share with with uh member Donley a strong conviction that that should all be public. The question I think before is, is does this cover all the memos that we've received like that, is something like that? Now, I think it covers everything related to, I don't know what is, that we've got multiple opinions, let's say, and and regards to something. Will it cover all the opinions we've received in regards to CWA? And ideally, we'll address the issue in general later. But that's my question. I don't know if your change is doing that, but I want the public to know if somebody's giving me information to try to persuade me in doing something, I want the public to be able to respond to that. If it's something to do with litigation, different ballgame. You have to be private on that. But this is not litigation issue. This is public policy. So the public has a right to respond to any information we have.
And and I agree, but I also, the question for me is, when do we disclose that? Uh, you know, I, the 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 policies that are the the attorney-client information that we have, the only reason we have it is because I requested it as a as a a a way for us to um deliberate. We are actively deliberating the CWA, although we haven't gotten back to it yet. It seems to me that the time to release that information is after we've deliberated. And and so, but what I'm hearing now, and everybody gets to do their own thing. Hold on, I I don't think I interrupted you. But we we just have to, if if this is what the board wants to do, then this is what the board wants to do. I still do not see connecting sixty two with forty seven as being the solution. If this board wants to 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 release every attorney-client information it gets to aid it in its decision-making, and you want to do that in advance, then so be it. Um but but that does not address the situation that's the amendment that's before us, I don't think. Uh, let's go with Dora, and then Andy, and we'll come back around.
So for full disclosure regarding the CWA, um the community workforce agreement, I I just wanted to put on the record that I am the community outreach manager for IBEW Local fifteen forty seven. So if there, i- if the board feels that there is any conflict with me voting on anything related to the CWA, I would like that input. I I know that's not necessarily the um the question you were looking for, but I wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, we just on the amendment right now, Dora. You're good. Uh, Mr. Hallman?
I've been thinking about this. Um I think the way forward would be if we get legal opinions on matters that are normally public, that we probably should release those so that the public can see them. But if we get legal opinions on items that we treat confidentially, that we are allowed or in essence required to discuss in executive session personnel issues or litigation or or other things of that nature, those are things we wouldn't release. But it occurs to me that I would like for us to get a legal opinion about that, ironically.
The re- this came, this came out of executive session to governance and now to this body, to this this setting.
And I realize it was something discussed in executive session, but it wasn't required to be. That that discussion didn't have to be confidential. But it could be. I'm not sure.
Uh, member Higgins?
I I think the public needs to be able to see.
And I don't think there's a a discrepancy about that.
Before before we vote on things, before we move it forward, they need to know what we're considering so they can respond to it. We need to do that as quickly as possible. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Member Donley?
There's been a suggestion, and I think it might be a cleaner way to do this, is for me to withdraw this amendment and then pull um resolution forty seven, memorandum forty seven, and seek to add approval to disclose the existing legal memorandum onto that. So if sixty two, yeah, uh if that would, if you think that would be more appropriate, I would withdraw my motion. It it ends up with the same result, that the public gets to know the legal opinion.
Okay. All right, did you get it, Katie?
So while he's withdrawing?
Could just say it one more time, member Donley.
I'm withdrawing my amendment.
He's withdrawing his amendment.
In anticipation of pulling forty uh fifty sixty two um and seeking to add the opening up of the legal memorandum for sixty two at that time.
Okay. Do you agree to her?
Yes.
Okay.
She said yes.
So we're back to the main motion. Correct? Okay, we're back to the main motion. Uh, member Jacobs?
Thank you. I I'm now going to weigh in on something that uh member Higgins has been debating on here, I think by himself for a few minutes. I uh I agree uh with the the transparency that uh releasing the memorandums would provide, um at least on this particular issue. I think that, you know, choosing, like member Higgins said, the litigation, obviously, it's a different situation. Um but I'm in favor of making these documents um public as we continue down the road of the CWA process. And I'm looking forward to engaging in more conversation with the board to that end. Thank you.
Any other comments before we vote? Dr. Bishop, you have anything?
I I uh. I actually think, um, Madam President, uh that, I mean, I guess it's just going back to the the main motion and and perhaps Mr. Holloman's kind of, I don't know if it was a joke, but it turned, it got a laugh. You know, it's, um, there was just comments I'm picking up is that if I'm getting persuaded by someone, I want it to be made public. I mean, the the board requested your own legal opinion. So I mean, that's, no one's trying to persuade you. On this one, this actually is a governance menu, men, you know, it was said before about the amendment that we just did to pull it, you know, the administration, that it didn't come from administration. I just um in understanding my job over the last thirty one years and the criticality of it, and I'm sure, you know, a lawyer sits at the table, that the board might find it quite difficult to find a lawyer when you ask for something and you make it public every time. I I I think in this town, it's kind of small, and um you're going to limit your ability to hire a lawyer if when you agree or disagree with something, an opinion, you just want to put it out in the public. So I just, I just caution as um it would just be difficult for lawyers to tell you what they what their real opinion is if they're going to sign that paper at the bottom, and it's going to be in the paper the next day. Just, just letting you know.
Thank you. All right, let's vote. Oh, Dora?
I just want to confirm that the board doesn't see any objection to me voting.
To, no, not in, not.
We we would have to revisit it when you we get to the actual CWA.
Okay. Which is in governance right now. All right, vote please. And that passes six, six yeas to one nay. So the board will, just voted to release attorney-client, client privilege on the CWA. Let's moving on, next item.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 043, the Attached Anchorage School District Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, Project Tables One and Two for July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2028.
There a second? Hello? Second? Okay. Any discussion, comments, or questions? Yes?
Yeah, I have maybe at least a couple of questions. Oh, yeah, and I'll wait for Mr. Rock to come up.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Member Lessons?
Sure, and I'll preface this by saying I have a new and healthy respect for the degree to which these are important long-term plans, but are also dynamic. And so I acknowledge their dynamism and the work that dynamism involves. I was surprised at the Bartlett High School items, and I wonder if you could speak to roughly $45 million of improvements, planning and design for Bartlett that I hadn't seen in previous iterations of the CIP? And I just, could you talk to us about that? Specifically with years three and five on the bonds?
Sure, through the President. So Bartlett High School, we have, with each one, especially with each one of our high schools, because they are larger buildings, they have a master plan. And that master plan stretches, you know, in some cases up to 20 years. So currently, we're about to go into Phase Three of Bartlett's plan. And so initially, we're gonna do some planning for that Phase Three, but there's also some infrastructure improvements that need to be made. These include the heating. Bartlett's boilers are in rough shape right now, but we're, we're keeping them running. This includes an intercom system, which is a safety matter. And then also consolidating the electrical services within the building. Currently has about seven different services for electrical. So this, the construction part of this would include consolidating those services. So moving on into the future Phase Three, we have a bunch of roofwork, exterior roof work, mechanical, electrical, life skills room, we're also looking at some of the movable walls. And this, this phase's focus will be on the West Wing.
Thank you. I guess I have one other follow-up question. One thing I've learned over the past few weeks is there's this line at the bottom, you know, percent of total deferred requirements. We've talked about our, the scope of the deferred maintenance needs. And there's a real shift between the bonds for 2022 and 2024 with the percent of the bonds that are focused on deferred requirements. And then that one for year five is just down at 12%. So there are a lot of small projects in those first couple of bonds, and then just a few big ones. So is that going to be a negative? You know, one of the, I understand the percent of deferred requirements is a, as a selling point for bonds, essentially. And I'm wondering if that lower percent is going to be a problem? Or we're just gonna, we need to focus on our, the master plans? And this, this is a way to get to it?
So previous board guidance focused on deferred requirements. And that was set way back in 2016. And so we were primarily focused on deferred requirements, putting in most cases 75 to 100% into deferred requirements. And that kind of mirrored the state bond debt reimbursement program that went on hiatus in 2015 and is extended out through 2025. Now, what we have, really you can look at most of these as deferred requirements anyways. We tend to break up our spending into your programmed renewable projects. So we, we know we're gonna need to replace a boiler in 25 years. So that's in there. And then programmatic changes, like, you know, we're gonna start a, a French immersion program at O'Malley, that's gonna require some changes. And then addressing deferred maintenance. So the typical formula for that is we like to do about 50% towards your renewals, your, your capital stuff. About 25% then goes to your programmatic changes. And then about 25% goes towards your deferred maintenance. But based on board's guidance, that's why we, we kept with the higher deferred maintenance. Now, moving into the, so past 2025, we get into the realm of maybe state bond debt will come back. So we're focusing a little bit more on the, the renewal projects. And that's why you see a dip in that.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Other questions? Member Donnelly?
Nobody else has a question? So my understanding of this proposal is that we're gonna be replacing, retiring 135 million in debt for the, for out years, and replacing it with 209 million in debt. So that's about a 65 and 974 million dollar increase in outstanding debt?
Through, through the President, member, to Member Donnelly, I have not done the, the math on that. But yes, and, and we've discussed this, that what the district is retiring in debt in the outlined years is decreasing. However, the, the maintenance requirements within the district are not decreasing, that that's gonna result in an increase in bond debt over time.
Madam President, I'm very concerned about that increase in bond debt because it's a double whammy on the taxpayers because the old debt being retired, as we know, is, is subsidized. So not only are we adding, proposing to add 70-some million dollars worth of debt, but it's 100% taxpayer-funded debt, which is gonna be more expensive to property taxes than the debt that's actually being retired. But I, I do have an amendment that's very consistent to what I've discussed before. And that's that I believe that Wonder Park and Tudor Elementary should be major remodeling projects in the, in the out four years and not replacement schools. And so I would move to amend Memorandum 43, the Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, projects to change the Wonder Park and Tudor Elementary replacement school projects with major remodeling projects in the design for those projects at those same schools.
Point of order, Tudor's not on the six-year plan. We, we've had this discussion. I just don't know why we keep doing this.
Because this is a new proposal that's coming before us as a main motion.
The proposal represents the changes that we made to the bond.
Well, I'm not changing what's happening in the bond we voted on. I'm changing the out years, Madam President. The three, four, five, and six out years is what I'm proposing to change. That's a totally separate issue.
So could you restate what you just said?
Wonder Park?
Wonder Park is in year four.
Yeah, Tudor and Wonder Park. Thank you, Madam President. I'll restate my, my proposed amendment. And that's that I would move to amend Memorandum 43 to change the Wonder Park and Tudor Elementary replacement school projects with major remodeling projects in the design for those projects at those same schools.
Is there any, is there a second? That motion fails for lack of a second. Other discussion? Yes, Member Holloman?
I'll just emphasize that we have to have a six-year plan. Right now, what it's gonna be in six months is really uncertain based on the outcome of the bonds. I mean, this is not a decision to incur debt or, or cast anything in stone. This will get revisited before we, before we do anything again. So to, to some degree, it's a placeholder for a while, which is how I've looked at it during this particular time period. After the April election, we'll certainly look at everything again. And before we propose a bond package again, we'll, we'll look at it again.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Uh, Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a question for the administration in terms of what work, I guess, would be done between now, this time, now and then this time next year for a project on the CIP for 2024. So for Wonder Park, would it make a practical difference to staff preparation? Or how we would go about business in other ways if the Wonder Park Elementary were a remodel versus a replacement?
Through, through the, the President, I just make sure I'm, I'm understanding the, the question, Member Jacobs. So, so Wonder Park in, in 2024, what's presented in the six-year plan is, is an amount to do a replacement design. So in this intervening period, let's just say that the bond passes and that the, the funds that are currently designated for planning and design, those will not go towards Wonder Park. So, so I think the absolute response to your question is it would have no impact. Is that, I mean, but again, I wanna make sure I'm answering your question.
No, that, that was my assumption. I just wanted to make sure that we're discussing something that doesn't have an impact on our operations for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the motion, approve the attached Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, Project Tables One and Two, July 22 to June 28, 2028. Please vote. Nice. And that passes six, six yeas, one nay. Moving on, non-agenda items.
Yeah, I'd like to, I move to pull Memorandum 056, the Pro forma Financial Planning and Budget Development Guidance.
Thank you. All right, pull 0, Memo 056. Member Donnelly?
Yeah, I'd move to pull Memorandum 62.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to pull Memorandum 58.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right, so Kelly, Member Lessons, you pulled Memorandum 056.
Um, I'd like to, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Anderson and any, maybe Mr. Atlef to come on up. And I would appreciate maybe a 30,000-foot perspective, an overview of the pro forma, if at all possible.
All right, so, welcome, guys. Next time we go. No problem. Go ahead. Dr. Bishop, anything before they start?
No, Madam President?
Okay, thank you. I will give a, a really brief overview, and then I will pull up, if Katie will let me share. Okay. I will pull up the memo, and Andy can go through some of that. So we'll go quick. Andy and I walked through a brief overview of the pro forma and a much deeper dive at the Finance Committee meeting in a couple of days. So the state has maintained the base student allocation for the BSA at 5930 since 2017. Inflationary drivers over the past five years have reduced purchasing power for the same BSA at a level of approximately $40 million less than what the district could afford with the same money in 2017. So this reality of flat funding coupled with routine inflationary cost increases is the main reason we have a deficit going into next year. The district has continued to streamline functions, reorganize for efficiencies, and used a combination of federal relief funds and fund balance to maintain class size for the past couple of years. The district used approximately $36 million in SERSA or SER II funds this year in order to maintain staff and class size. Declining student enrollment during the last two years and reduction in the state's hold harmless provision will result in approximately $20 million less revenue in FY '23. The district's projected general fund deficit to start, and it's just to start the budget build process, is just over $67 million. The district still has close to $91 million remaining in SER III funds. Portions of those funds will likely be applied at some level toward next year. And that's really why, over the last several board meetings and finance meetings, we really tried to push and, and hold on to until we could complete the pro forma and get the budget deficit for next year from using more SER III funds to give us more flexibility to meet our needs next year. I would stress that federal assistance is one-time funds. Once it's spent, it's gone. So it's not a good source of funding to commit to future costs that go into the out years. There are many people in organizations, I think the board is aware, from the mayor's team, the assembly, community organizations, who are also looking at the same SER III funds as being able to assist their priorities. We've had everything from requests for half a million dollars to buy a building so someone could help us later, to three and $400,000 sub-grant requests for other things so they could help. And we've talked through the rules and the strings associated with SER III. And, and so those efforts were unsuccessful. We simply couldn't, couldn't do it. We do expect to present next year's preliminary budget to the board late January, one-on-one or one-on-two, like we have done the last several years. And then in front of the full board, along with recommended allocations of SER III funds at that time. There will be an in-depth discussion again at the finance meeting. So at this time, I will hand over to Andy to give a quick overview. And then naturally, we'll answer questions and plan on a deep dive for Wednesday. Let me share this real quick.
Okay, thank you. So really, the purpose of this pro forma budget, the memo, is really outline what our expected revenues are and changes in cost estimates and expenditures. They really keep service levels in the same, the same way as they are budgeted now. Taking into, taking into account changes in projections and, you know, some of these other price variation on fixed contracts and labor costs. Okay, Jim's got that up. So on page two, we really start talking about the enrollment. I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly and just kind of notate the high part points and what's in here and what to look for. But that's really the narrative around the enrollment. On page three, if we go down, shows the, the BSA and the formula of how that enrollment turns into dollars. Note that the estimate we're using for the pro forma is about 20 ADM lower than what our current projection is. We're still waiting on our demographer to get back with our school-by-school, grade-by-grade projections. And we'll update those as, as we get them. But right now, we have a 20 ADM decrement, and that's because of the loss of the New Path program from the DJJ funding. It used to come through this, and we had, and we had staff at the It used to come through this, and we had staff at the New Path, which is the Anchorage Jail. The students that were under eighteen at the Anchorage Jail has moved over to McLaughlin, so those students are still getting served, but the ones that are over eighteen are now on the DJJ GED track, is my understanding. So that's going to be new for next year. I think that program actually ended this year, but we got the funding this year, and it's expected to go away next. On this chart, on line ten, is the hold harmless reduction, and that's us going from fifty percent hold harmless from the base year of FY-20 down to twenty-five percent. So between state and local funds, that's expected to be about a seven-and-a-half million dollar decline just in the, in the, in the hold harmless provision. Skip it over a couple of pages. The next couple of pages are just the narrative around the revenue, kind of what the changes and what we're expecting. Again, about twelve point three million is going to be attributable on a budget-to-budget basis, the loss of enrollment, and about seven and a half is the hold harmless funding. So there's really, you know, those are the two biggest drivers. On page six, at the revenue chart, there's about a twenty point four million dollar deficit from our adopted budget last year to what we're projecting, our adopted budget for this year versus what we're projecting for next year. There's some uncertainty around Impact Day. That's, there's a lot of federal legislation going whether to up that or even fully fund it or let us use, kind of hold us harmless from what our FY-20 counts were. So we, we think that'll drop a little bit just because the on-base students have trickled down, but got to keep our eye on what the federal legislation does. On the expenditure projections, go on down on page seven. This is the FTE that's, we think, would be required to fund this instruction, the same way as we're doing now in all our ancillary services, with the changes in enrollment from our adopted budget to our pro forma. Note the stimulus funds there. The, for FY-22, that's the amount we put in the SIRSIA. We do have them included in there, and as you look through this document, those, that two-hundred-and-ninety-three FTE between those functions, one-hundred-and-three-fifty, those are included in our general fund budget deficit, just to give you guys an idea of what those total dollars are going to cost to keep those programs going. So when we say the deficit's sixty-seven million, we have ninety-one million left in unallocated art money. These positions haven't been paid for yet, so they would need to be paid for out of that ninety-one dollars, ninety-one million, if you want to keep them going. So it's really the big takeaway from the staffing, ongoing. Let's see, on next page eight, personnel services, this is where we focus a lot of time in our pro forma, because they make up eighty-six percent of our cost in the district or in the general fund, and, you know, if we have to make adjustments or cuts, that's where generally it comes from. There is a list, as we look at subsequent tables describing the salary and wage increases. It is important to note that we have included both settled and unsettled estimated contract costs in here. We're getting a couple of years behind on some of these contracts, AEA Totem, bus and food service. We've included aggregate changes for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, so two fiscal years on there, and they're still unsettled, although it'd sound like food service got approved tonight, so that's, that's good. They settled their contract after the twenty-two budget development, so it wasn't included in our FY-22 budget, but it will be, so they'll have two years of catch-up as well when you're looking at a twenty-two to twenty-three budget comparison. Exempt, the board approved the contract back after the budget had been approved again, and that was to make up for three fiscal years of twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. So keep that in mind as you're looking at some of these percentages increases. Most of these do take into account multiple years of funding. APA, custodians, and maintenance, those are the ones that did get settled prior to the FY-23 or FY-22 budget being implemented, so we only have the one-year change for those groups. Moving down, the table four just shows kind of an annual average step and salary movement. Should be noted, like, not everyone's going to see the step movement if they're at the end of the schedule, but this is the average. If you're receiving step and salary movement, that's where they are, and you can see the two highest ones are, or a couple of the highest ones are still unsettled. Oh, let's move on to page eleven, to the, to the chart, that details how much our wage increases are expected to be. Again, these, these estimates are made using our latest publicly available data on our contracts. For instance, our AA contract is based on what's the last settle, or last proposed district publicly made offer was for salary, SEP, lane movement, and other public or ancillary costs such as like addenda, things like that. So the deficit shown here, it could change, you know, depending on how some of these contracts settle, that the forty-one million increase in wages and benefits could, could go up or, or, you know, down potentially, but. There are a couple of things to note in here. On lines twelve and nineteen are the, the cost of the SIRSIA, the staff and the addenda that was put into the SIRSIA. So this is where it's added back, but we can clearly see which one, which items those are. So lines twelve, line thirteen, or nineteen, line nineteen is that other SIRSIA apparel. That's predominantly the school, summer school addenda and the technology addenda associated with the one-to-one plan. The other big things, and then we did take out, like, on line thirteen, you can see the metrics-based staff, so the ones for the drop in enrollment. We know we lost kids from our approved FY-22 budget to where we're at now and what we're projecting for next year, so those, that seven point nine million there is to account for those changes in enrollment. The other thing I think we're going to have is a pretty big unknown is our attrition lines on line twenty and line twenty-nine on the chart. We did increase that by about four million. We are, you hear all these people talking about, we having trouble filling these positions, and that's, you know, we, financially, there's, there's a savings to be had there. It's not great for students, but as far as our, you're trying to get closer to that in our budget, we believe we'll need to trick up our, trickle up our attrition rates to, just to try to predict what's going to happen, but you know, that's, frankly, that's been pretty difficult the last few years, to predict what's going to happen in employment. Moving on to the very end, or not the very end, but the page thirteen, here's the budget deficit chart. Really, the only things to note, aside from the salary increase and the revenue decreases, a couple of things, there's, you see a decrease in the amount of contracted services. That's largely us just trying to get closer to our projections on utilities. The last couple of years, we've been pretty, pretty well under budget on our heat and electric, and we're just trying to get it to line. We don't expect a decrease in the actual cost, but trying to get our budgets to match what our actual costs are a little closer. Capital L.A. is based on depreciation that goes into our equipment replacement fund, so the cost of our current equipment to maintain or to replace, we do expense that out of our general fund and put that into our equipment replacement funds to buy future needs for white fleet and buses, IT equipment, a variety of things that go into that. And then the other thing is that we're continuing to see increases in insurance, the available market share, and then the nationwide trans and sexual abuse and things are just really causing insurance premiums to go up, and a lot of insurers are dropping K-12 from their coverage altogether, so it's just hard to find insurance at this point. And lastly on this, the line twelve, there's other ongoing SIRSIA costs, and that would be what's needed to maintain the IT one-to-one program and also the instructional software that we've purchased to be able to maintain that. So there's, and there's some other smaller things in there. There was other supplies and, like, transportation for summer school, things like that are in there, but that's about what would be needed to keep everything going the same way as we had it in, in this year, so at least we plan to. So again, you know, the, shows a sixty-seven million dollar deficit, but that doesn't take into account the art money yet. Then lastly, on page fifteen, real quickly, the transportation, you won't see a deficit on there. We did increase the property taxes to be able to, to keep that from having a deficit. We'll expect to have a upper limit tax authority remaining because we decreased the general fund by about three point, I think it was three point three million. We're going to have that upper limit authority to be able to push over into our, our transportation fund to shore up that, so. So overall, you know, still about a sixty-seven million dollars that we need to contend with. Looking out into the future, though, you know, that another seven and a half million goes away on hold harmless in FY-24, and if we only have, you know, depending on how much money we have from these other art acts or SIRSIA, if there's any money left in there, that could be used, applied to it. But unless the state does something, you know, and it's really is on the state to be able to make those changes, twenty-four is going to look like a pretty disastrous year, unless there's some changes made.
And just to remind the board, these are projections based off current law. We know that the state is going to get a billion, some odd plus additional revenue than what they had planned because the price of oil went up. If it looks like something happens very early in January or even while we're briefing the budget in February, and the state increases revenue, then that's one way to lower your deficit naturally. So these, these are projections. We'll go into the budget build when we talk about this. At the finance meeting, we'll ask about board priorities or board guidance directives as we go into the budget build, and we'll talk about that at the finance meeting and then again at the next school board meeting before we start coming up with what we have to do by statute, which is develop a balanced budget, and we have to get it to the assembly by the first Monday in November, or March, excuse me. So that's why the board gets briefed the budget in February is to get it to the assembly on time.
Madam President, and if you could comment, Mr. Anderson, on Jim, and Andy, I had been reading on the SRTI or recovery money, and the, they do allow carryover because it is meant to be spent through FY-23, but they do allow till September of twenty-three, so twenty-four? So, so next year, so there's quite, maybe two and a half years that you, or two and a half years from July to September, two and a quarter years, that you could spread the money out?
That's correct. We have until thirty September, twenty-twenty-four to expend the funds. So in a, in a planning world, we would look at how long can we extend things like summer school? And when we come back in February with the preliminary budget, the one we recommend to the school board, we will look at those out years and how far you can stretch the available dollars, and then based off priorities, recommend what chunk we think should be spent in twenty-three and potentially what chunk should be held back for FY-24. I think the school board knows the intent of this money was to fully reopen schools and help students catch up for learning loss during the pandemic, and that's certainly all of the reports we have to do. There's new maintenance of equity requirements that Dr. Bishop and I attended a briefing just this week. So federal guidance is still rolling out. That makes this very stringent requirements on what you can spend the funding on, what you have to track in terms of metrics or data and reports, and to make sure we have, you know, we meet the requirements. Frankly, Deed on, I think it was Friday, Dr. Bishop, during the brief even said, they're still waiting on guidance. They just got a, a twelve-page book on maintenance of equity, and they still don't know for sure what the requirements are, but that, so I expect that federal requirements will continue to fluff out over the next many months.
Okay, questions? Other questions? Thank you, guys. Are you done?
There are more questions that I have, but it is, but it's getting late, and other items have been polled, and we will have a chance just to clarify. The Finance Committee is on, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday, Wednesday, next Wednesday.
And you can always submit your questions. You can always submit them. I don't, you don't have to wait till here. We can get, you can ask them again here, but at least if they have them, we can all get the response. Okay, so we are now, let's see, Member Downly, you pulled number sixty-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we now have this on the action agenda for next meeting, but we have a legal opinion that directly relates to this, which is not public yet, and this, this meeting is going to be the only opportunity we have to take any kind of official action to make that memorandum available to the public for the, and also to board members to be able to utilize and debate on this subject. So at this time, I'd move a sense of the body that the board waives any attorney-client privilege regarding any legal opinions related to memo sixty-two in ASD's possession.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, you want to speak to your motion? I mean, you already have, but you may speak again.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. We have this legal opinion. It's not, there's no pending litigation. There's no, there's no justification for not making it public because board members know about it, and the board members obviously have it to consider in making decisions about memo sixty-two, but, but they can't discuss or explain that to the public unless we make this memorandum public. So it seems like completely consistent with school district policy, which is the district shall be open, transparent, and accountable. It seems absolutely appropriate just to make it, waive the attorney-client privilege on this memorandum at this time.
Any other comments? As I recall, the day this came out of governance, I think you were the one that asked for the legal opinion. I simply approved the, not approved, but I simply moved it forward. I don't know that anybody else had any questions about it, but the motion before you is to amend? I'm sorry. Oh, you got it written? Okay. She got it. I think she's got it written.
I know, but I changed it a little bit. I moved just a simple sense of the body, that we would waive this attorney-client privilege for any memorandum, legal memorandum we have for memorandum sixty-two.
Okay, there's only one, but, okay.
But it was also mentioned that we should do it more generically.
So, all right, this is a non-action item.
The trouble with amending a non-action item is it doesn't go into effect until the next meeting, and so at this time, I moved a sense of the body, which is available under Robert's rules and procedure to, for simple questions that are presented that aren't, you know, it's not a substantive question at this point of view. And so that's, my motion was a sense of the body to waive the attorney-client privilege.
For this item for next time?
No, for the legal memorandum to be made public.
Right, 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 right. Any other discussion? We can't, okay, so maybe I'm just confused because this is a non-action item. So help me understand how, how this is going to, because Katie's typing in an amendment to the item, which we do not discuss till next time.
As a point of information, we wouldn't be taking action on the item. We're, this is a separate, in essence, this is a separate action by the board to say we want to release the legal opinion, but we're not taking action on sixty-two.
All right, so this is outside of the actual motion, but that's not, is that how you captured it, Katie?
I believe so.
Okay. I think it was Carl. Oh, no, it was, it was Mr. Higgins.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just wanted to echo that I understand, my understanding is the same as Vice President Holloman. The other thing that I'll add is, you know, from a functional standpoint, if this were approved by the board, I think the, what would happen next is, or at least I see the memo being attached to today's agenda, just so it's available to those who wish to see it.
Right, okay.
Can you see it? I move for the sense of the body?
I, I move a, it'd just be a sense of the body that the board waive, and then the rest is.
Any other comments? Member Higgins?
Just clarification, if, if we're amending a motion that doesn't come up and get voted on till next time, it won't be effective prior to remaking the decision, which I think is what you're trying to do. it won't be effective prior to remaking the decision, which I think is what you're trying to achieve, right? Is that right? You're, you're trying to get the, the legal opinion released prior to us voting. And this is attached to the vote on when we vote for it, if I understand correctly. So is that correct or not?
No.
No. This amendment, should it pass, will be attached to the non-action item. Right? No? All right, then I'm, I'm, I don't know what I'm doing.
Point of clarification, this would in essence be like a resolution.
Okay.
Independent on its own.
Independent and on its own, okay. Okay. I think I'm clear now.
Yes.
Any other questions? Yeah, I mean, it's really not an amendment. It's, uh, what do we call it? Just a sense of the body. And then we can vote. Shall we vote? No. Hold on. Uh, looks like we're waiting on door. Okay. Oh, that, there it is. Is that the one out there? No. Okay, so that passes six to one. And I think the, the next one, uh, memory, uh, who pulled, oh, Mr. Higgins, you pulled zero five eight.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump in. I, I appreciate the update on this, uh, and, and I still have questions about the process in general because we've now reduced it to about a quarter of what it would have been before, whatever process has been done and that. And so I question maybe the process of this. But my questions right now are really focused on, my understanding is we've got a bunch of other schools with the same systems, same outdated, lack of, lack of, of, uh, backup in regards to materials if he, something breaks down. Um, are we looking at potentially though, expanding the number of systems we, we replace? Because since it's as much cost, lower cost and providing us a supply of replacement parts, at least temporarily until we upgrade everybody so that we won't run into the same issue we did at West? Because I understand the problem at West is that we didn't have replacement parts. Now, if we cannibalize that, and maybe if we, we do a couple of other schools with the savings, maybe that would address it. I'm just kinda curious if that's the plan or not.
Dr. Bishop? Thank you, um, through the president to answer your question, Mr. Higgins. I always appreciate being asked. And then I will request Tom Roth and Dave Whitey, they actually do have information. And, and I would share that the process worked well because we did get it to a quarter of the cost by that process.
Yeah.
So that's good. But they can answer your questions in regarding to salvaging those parts.
I always look at it as if it's a business and it goes in my pocket. I'd be unhappy if I paid over half a million dollars more than I had to.
Through, through the president to, to Member Higgins. So it, and thank, it's a great question. The, the, the immediate answer is yes, we, we do intend to pursue replacement of all the TC six systems. But not, not under an emergency procurement process. So, uh, what, what the, the district is intending to do and really kind of as part of the broader, um, budget, uh, discussion as well as S R three is to propose to replace the existing TC six systems. But that we would also, as a part of this, look to have this, this audio enhancement feature. Because what that would do is, is make the, uh, replacement of the entire systems eligible for federal reimbursement under the S R three. So, so we are intending to, and then we would compete that contract, uh, for that replacement. So I, I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and I appreciate the importance of this system. And I don't wanna diminish that at all. This, if anybody watching, you know, news this week is fully aware of how critically important this system is. And so I don't wanna diminish that this is not a, a critical, you know, process to move quickly. That's why I looked at the other schools and that's why I raised that concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on memorandum zero five eight? All right, all right, thank you, guys. That brings us to H, uh, public testimony. We have no other public testimony. Uh, we do not have a superintendent update today, or that didn't change. We are now at board, school board and administration comments. Item J. So which side should I start on this time? Member Jacobs, you be it.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just, uh, wanted to, um, openly acknowledge and express appreciation for the, um, it's been some time since we met and a lot's happened at the municipal level regarding our budget. But I did wanna express appreciation for the, um, assembly, which voted to support funding that, um, maintained, uh, the important early education, uh, programs that we have in our municipality as well as supported, uh, the school resource officer program. Um, the assembly will be dealing with, uh, potential overrides, uh, to vetoes made that happened after that funding was re-added to the budget. And so I might, I hope that we can count on their support one more time, uh, to ensure that we have the resources we need. Obviously, there's been plenty of discussion regarding, um, federal funds that we've received. And, uh, through tonight's meeting, we heard from, uh, our finance folks regarding either side of that story and the reality we're facing as a district and how, um, we have significant challenges ahead of us. And we certainly, we hope we can work with the, uh, mayoral administration and the assembly to support all students in the best way that we can while we lobby our legislature in June to do the right thing and make sure education is properly funded for years to come. So with that said, uh, we have, uh, the governance, um, committee meeting, um, which is coming up, I believe on the 14th, along with the communications meeting. Um, that's at 3:30 and 4:30, I believe. And then, um, we talked about finance being on the 15th as well, I think. So I wanted to throw up those two, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Member, uh, Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I just share the concerns with the pro forma and the, and the gap that's, uh, seems to be emerging for the out years.
Okay, thank you, sir. Member Lessons?
This is probably an invitation to a larger conversation another time, but certainly the events at Oxford High School have been, been thinking about them this week. Um, I know in A S D, we have Alice drills. We're investing substantial taxpayer funds into the secure vestibules, part of our preparation. Um, the one question in my mind was, what are we doing to help prevent these scenarios and help with staff training? There were, it seemed to have been some procedural errors at the Oxford High School that I would hope A S D has plans to not let slip through our cracks. Um, I think that would be an interesting conversation to have down the road.
Okay, we'll capture that. Thank you. Uh, Member Wilson?
I, um, I appreciation to the A L L program for all the work they're doing to reach out to, um, our many groups in our community, trying to help bridge the gap with, uh, culture, with language, um, and, and really try to bring all of our families into the fold. So thank you for that work.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
Um, I will say, one member Lawson said, kind of, um, just made me remember that in our schools, our staff work really hard to de-escalate. And it was chilling to me when I read the details about what happened at Oxford. That they, there, it would have been so possible to have stopped that. And, and yet, they, they did the worst thing possible. Um, and of course, it still falls to the student to not do that. But I, every day, we, our staff works really hard to get kids to channel their energy, channel their anger, channel their frustration. It is, is part of teaching that nobody talks about very much, but it absolutely is consumptive. And, uh, I've seen staff members sort of adopt kids and say, this year, I'm gonna work with this kid and just get them to be social, to, to talk instead of yell and to, uh, debate instead of strike out, different things. So it is something that we teach, is something that everybody works at really hard. I, I don't think they get the recognition that they should for, uh, everything they do. So, yeah, it's, it's a core part of every day.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
Thank you. Um, I always like to start by at least acknowledging and thanking the speakers. Uh, they came forward, I appreciate the, the, um, um, the charter schools, you know, engagement in the school district throughout it. It gives our parents a chance to walk and, and make their own selections. And we heard strongly from a lot of people how strongly they feel about what the, what the, this, this charter school means to them. And I appreciate that. Also hearing again from the staff, the frustrations, of course, where we are right now financially, watching in the pro forma. I don't know where the board needs to go at some point in time of challenging the issue of what adequate funding is and what we need to do. We know that we've got, uh, equity issues in regards to what we're funding compared to other places in the state. The base, the allocation is based upon, um, uh, you know, the, um, cost of living index from the nineties, and it's not accurate. We know that from a Pyke-Sodom study, how underfunded we are for the size of classrooms and what we need to do. And we're in a crisis right now, we're let from 2017, no increase from the state. So the obligations to the state is whatever they choose to obligate, and there's no commitment here. And I think that's a legal challenge that we did the Pyke-Sodom study for. I think we need to have a discussion about those options at some point as a board and say, we have to fight for the kids at some point. There was too much damage being done by ignoring the state's obligation. They've shifted as much as they can locally. Locally, we can't get any more money from the municipality because the formula is set so that they, they're providing the max. Let's give them credit. And I'm very appreciative of the decision to fund the S R Os too from the municipality. I think we need to express appreciation because particularly after this last week, the idea of cutting that would be, uh, pretty dramatic and pretty risky. But enough's enough at some point with the funding issue. We have got to address the issue that we can't go on another five years like this. What are we going to do and how our schools will be looked and how can we help kids? When you, all you're worried about is just increasing classroom sizes and you can't address issues beyond that. So, um, I'm hopeful that we'll have that discussion at some point. Uh, we need to have it with the legislature, with the assembly. And we need to be willing to at least challenge the status quo and say, what are our options? Because too much is at risk in the education system and too many kids are gonna suffer if we don't do that. So that's kinda where I'm at right now, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bishop? No further comment, Madam President, thank you. What about the gallery over there? I know, they're like, let's go, let's go. So just a couple of, uh, final comments, uh, reminders that we do have our joint assembly meeting on Friday. We also have our legislative luncheon. So we will have an opportunity to begin those conversations that Mr. Higgins just not begin, continue, uh, that he just mentioned, uh, relative to, uh, funding. Um, I also would like to, uh, uh, show appreciation and voice appreciation to the assembly uh, for their efforts to, and, and I did send, um, a thank you directly from the board. And, uh, M J's gonna help me work out, uh, uh, another, um, recognition and appreciation in our community update, which is coming out, uh, oh, tomorrow? No, what's today, Monday? Wednesday. So, um, whenever it comes up, I, I'm losing days here. So, but with that, um, if you have not contacted your legislative buddy, uh, go back and look at that list. Make sure you check in with your buddy. It's still not too late to invite them to the luncheon. Uh, we are hoping to have, uh, uh, our students are gonna do some tours. They'll also be making the meal and we know it's gonna be delicious. It's shrimp and something. So with that, I'll, uh, accept a motion to adjourn. Not everybody one time, second, oh, you mean?